Is a wash stand that would be found in most early bedrooms. It has the wash bowl and the pitcher, the water of which you would get outside from the cistern. It's brought by wagon and tanks on old flatbed wagons or flatbed truck from a spring down the street. But you'd fill the pitcher with water and then pour it into the basin, the amount that you need, and set it aside. Wash your face and hands and dry your face and hands with hand decorated towels that the ladies of the house probably made in her spare time when she had it. And here we have an old mirror. The silver is kind of discoloring, but the interesting fact is that it's made with real African elephant tusks ivory, which of course is against the law now. A few people know what this is. Usually you have a pair of them. And when you put on your boots, you put this in the little tab that's inside the upper part of the boot. And usually you're sitting down and you point your toe into the top of the boot and yank your boots up. Since there was no electricity, they had hand operated hair clippers. And if the ladies wanted curly hair, you got it with a curling iron, which you could heat over your hurricane lamp. That's why it appears smoky and even burned. And you'd wrap up your hair, hold it for a few seconds and then unroll it. And you have a good case of the frizzes, no doubt. The ivory was used in whole dresser sets, little trays, containers for powder and pins and things like that. Even the manicure tools had ivory handles. The men, of course, had a shaving mug with a shaving soap in here and a brush, whisk it around, you know, and put it on their cheek and chin. And then they had a straight razor, which we don't have, and they sharpened it on a strap and you had to be very careful or you'd cut yourself. The desk is the typical road desk with the fold up chair. And the desk got bigger towards the back for the taller children where I usually sat. Now, there's also a closet in the corner. It's a very small closet. They didn't need a very big closet because they didn't have all that many clothes, maybe a Sunday suit, dress, children's clothes. They would probably have a dresser with drawers. This is the adult bedroom, mixed up as the adult bedroom. It has a log cabin quilt on the bed. And to the right is a sewing cabinet, which you can pick up and carry anywhere you want to do your crocheting or needlework out on the porch. Under the bed are the two chamber pots. On the, to the right, hanging on the closet door are a pair of long johns and a red flannel night shirt, both men's attire. To the left is a hope chest. Every young woman had a hope chest and planning for her future home so she'd gather all kinds of linens and quilts and towels and handiwork that she had spent her free time making. The chair in the corner is a slider. It's kind of a rocking chair. It gives you a sliding effect. And up here on a wall is a picture of Minnie Hill Palmer and some more of the real ivory dresser set. And this is a man's brush set for his shoes, for his hair, and to brush any lint off of his suit on Sunday. And this is an interesting container. Most people don't know what it's for. It collects, they collect human hair in it. They make mourning art out of it. They braid, twist, weave the hair into flowers and mount it in frames for pictures and flower arrangements. And they also put on combs for hair decorations or on the lapel pin to make a pin to wear. Down here on the floor is the old time satchel with the initials there, all the identification you needed at that time. You could possibly picture it up on the top of a stagecoach or on the old time train. We do have a stagecoach trail that starts here in the park and went on over the mountains to Santa Barbara.
We'll be right back with more from Aging Well in L.A.
An emergency can happen at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
It's my job to teach you the safe way to ride a bike. You should always wear a helmet just in case you fall. Ride on the sidewalk. It's safer than the street.
Okay.
When crossing a driveway, stop your bike and look both ways.
Like this?
That's good. And obey all traffic laws.
Traffic laws?
Yep. Like stopping at stop zones and walking your bike across the street.
Boy, I'm glad you're my big brother.
I know.
Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
A wash day was a major event back in Minnie's day. Over here we have her washing facilities, two galvanized tubs and a hand operated wringer. You put your warm water and soap in one and you would agitate the clothes with the hand operated agitator. If you had stains, you could scrub them on the board. And when it was time to rinse, you would take the laundry stick and fish them out of there and put them through the hand operated wringer into the wash, rinse water over here. Then you would agitate them again. And when they were rinsed, you would reverse the process and put the clothes back through the wringer into a woven wicker basket. Then you would carry them outside and hang them on a clothesline with clothespins, which you never left the bag of clothespins hanging outdoors because they'd get weathered and then they'd put marks on your clothes. On a rainy day, you'd use a wooden rack that you'd open up in the house. When the clothes are ready to iron, which was probably the next day, you've got to use a handy satin iron. It's called a satin iron because that's the name of the company that manufactured it. There were three because you heated them on the wood stove. And you would have the three lined up over here, heating. When it was ready, you'd take it and start ironing. And then when that got cool, you'd bring it back, release the handle, put it on the second iron, and then continue your ironing. In those days, nothing went to waste. There were feed sacks and flour sacks, which were saved and used for towels, blouses, aprons. You could buy yardage at the general store, but if you have a good sack at home and it's useful, you could use that. Over here on this table, we have butter churns. This is one of the activities that the children get to use on Pioneer Day in the fall. They get to make homemade butter. This is a coffee grinder or spices, one or the other. And over here in this cabinet, there are a whole lot of things we could describe, but I won't take the time now. But the story of using, mixing starch to starch the collars and cuffs, you'd make kind of a pudding, the consistency of a pudding. And you dip the collars and cuffs into the water and pudding mixture, so to speak, hang it out to dry, bring it in, sprinkle the clothes, wrap them in a towel so it's evenly moist, then unroll it the next day and get to use your handy satin iron to iron out the wrinkles. And then, of course, there was no Gerber's baby food, so they'd cook vegetables and puree them through the puree or mashed potatoes. Anybody could eat it. And Minnie did a lot of canning since they raised fruit and vegetables. The Ball Company is an old, old, old fruit jar manufacturing company, but you'd have to sterilize everything. And then you'd fill it with your fruit or vegetables, put a rubber gasket or washer in there, put the lid back on, lining up the groove so that the big metal loop can fit in there and then push down and it will be thoroughly canned, sealed from air. Of course, the new modern method is actually basically the same, but the washer is built into the metal lid. Once you have the jars and the screw part, all you have to do is buy the replacement metal lids. You screw it on tight and wait a minute and you'll hear a popping sound, which shows you that the oxygen is out, the air is out. There are all kinds of tools. The meat grinder fastens to the edge of the table. You decide if you want fine grind or coarse grind and screw it on tightly. And then put chunks of meat in there and turn the handle and it forces it through the grinding, the grinder here. A favorite job for children before or after school was to gather eggs. These are decoy eggs. You can see the hens have pecked at them. But the theory was that if you have one of these, slide it under the hen, take the good egg, and leave the decoy, you won't get pecked yourself. Moving over to the stove, this is a wood stove. And it was vented out the wall. This was the original outdoor wall. Usually ask anybody if they know what this is. Most young folks say it's a cheese grater. It's a toaster. Put the bread on the little racks here, put it over coals. You can use it when you go camping. And when it's brown on one side, you flip it over and brown the other side. Making waffles was about the same as today, except there was no electricity, so you use cast iron waffle iron. You put the batter in here, close it up, let it brown, flip it over, and let it brown on the other side. I think everybody knows or perhaps has used one of these. You slide it open, put some oil and kernels in there and close it and shake it over a fire, campfire, fireplace, stove, whatever, and you get popcorn. Since there was no electricity, this was a good job for children also. You'd hang your carpets, or carpets you braided rugs, over a tree limb or the clothesline and you'd beat the dirt out of the rugs. To have water in the kitchen, they'd bring water from the cistern and put it in a stone crock and they could ladle it out with a long handled ladle. And doing dishes, you'd fill the enamel pans, one for washing and one for rinsing. And you could use any table or whatever to set them on. Over here in the corner, we have a variety of items. This is a cream pail. And they separated the cream from the milk, which was in the large milk pail in the corner. The cream was put in a smaller bucket. And then it could be used in the butter makers that we showed earlier, the hand cranked butter maker. If there was an ice box, an iceman came every other day or so with a big block of ice. It came in a wagon, horse drawn or motorized. And he'd come in with a big block of ice in these hooks with a leather protector on his shoulder and put it in the ladies' ice box. But that made another chore in that every now and then you had to empty the catcher under the, under the ice box, which was the melted ice block. Otherwise it would overflow onto the floor. Over here is a Hoosier cabinet. It was an item that could be brought west in the covered wagon in that it came in two parts, the upper part and the lower part. It's fastened right here on both sides. This is a smaller model. Some of them fit a whole wall. But an interesting fact is this convenience. This held about 25 pounds of flour. It was rodent proof, no mice. You could see how much flour you had. And then when you were making biscuits or pie crust, you just turned the crank and the flour came down sifted into your measuring cup. What more could a housewife want? Then this pulled out, you'd shake the flour on it and roll out the dough here. And then you had your biscuit cutter or cookie cutter or little pie crust for tarts. Since there was no electricity, you had to use a hand operated egg beater. They're so old that some of them don't work. The question is, people ask, what is that? It's a meatball maker. Nowadays, you make them in your hands and forget the tool. We're all familiar with this, but this is made out of old type steel. You could also seat three kids around here to eat lunch or breakfast. Another convenience was a breadboard. And then down here, we have a bread box. It's also rodent proof. No mice could get in there. That about covers what we have here in the kitchen. The kitchen could be any room in the house for that matter, just so you had an outside wall, you could vent the stove pipe through.
Thanks so much, Beverly. That was really fascinating, a real trip down memory lane for me. Reminds me of my grandmother's cottage in England. Really a wonderful tour. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. And anybody else who would love to be a volunteer here, we'd sure appreciate it. We're looking for new members and volunteers.
Absolutely, viewers. If you have a few hours to spare, come on here to the Chatsworth Historical Society. I'm here with Andre van der Volk. He's the co-president of the Chatsworth Historical Society. He's here with his grandchildren today and he's going to tell us a little bit about this very special place and this very special event. Andre, tell us what's happening here today.
Well, thank you, Helen. Good afternoon to you. The Homestead Acre is an acre and a third in Chatsworth, in the northwest part of the San Fernando Valley. And we do this twice a year. And this is our fundraiser. We're self sustaining, no tax funds are involved or anything else, and we keep up these beautiful grounds and the historical cottage in the background and the museum. And we've been doing this actually since 19, the 1960s, the mid 1960s. And one of the first things we did was we moved the church, the Little Pioneer Church, into what is now at the end of Lasson Street, which is the memorial park.
Okay, so that was originally here on this site?
No, it was actually original on Topanga.
Okay.
But it was one of the first projects we did. And then in order to, like I said, sustain us every year, why we do this twice a year. We have our festival in the, in the springtime and then also we have one in the fall.
Wonderful.
Now, the grandkids are here. They're actually working today. Now, this one is starting.
Oh, that's...
This is my youngest one. This is Brody.
This is Brody.
And he'll start and he'll grab drinks and things like this. He knows the difference on that. And then Brooke here, she goes ahead and she kind of figures out how much it is and then she'll grab the drinks. And then this Charlie, he's actually in charge and he's learning how to use the cash box.
Right.
So he uses this math and everything else. And then my two veterans over there. That's my oldest granddaughter and Bryce, that's the second oldest one. They're full fledged cashiers, so they know how to make change. And I think it surprises most people when they, when they find out in school that they know how to make change off of a $10 bill or a $5 bill or whatever it may be.
Now Hunter, you're, you're wearing the Girl Scout. What do you call this? What is this slash you're wearing here? So have you brought more Girl Scouts along with you today?
Yeah.
So your troop actually comes along here and helps with these events?
Yeah, this is our second time coming together. First, we went over there and we planted flowers and then we're helping here today.
That's wonderful. And what do you like most about coming here?
Um, probably the hot dog stand.
Is it the eating, the hot dogs, or are you actually serving them?
Equal.
I bet. Bryce, what do you do when you come along? What's your favorite thing to do?
My favorite thing is to come here and learn the interesting history and teach other people about it.
It really is a fascinating place to come, so we're actually encouraging viewers, if you live anywhere near this place, if you're anywhere in the Chatsworth area or even the wider San Fernando Valley, come along and be a volunteer here. These grounds are kept by volunteers. I believe they come along on a Wednesday and do gardening here. Lots to do here. It's a wonderful place, so I really encourage you viewers, if you've got a few extra hours on hand, come along here and be a volunteer. It's such a rewarding experience.
Thank you, Helen. As far as the hot dogs are concerned, this one has set the record. I think she's eaten five hot dogs.
Oh, for goodness sake!
Yeah, almost.
Anyway, that's not, not too bad a record to have. So viewers, come on here to Chatsworth Historical Society and help them out. You'll really enjoy yourself. I'm here with Betty Summers and she's one of the volunteers that tends these fabulous gardens. In fact, I think you're the chief volunteer in charge of gardens, aren't you?
In charge of the gardens, yes.
Tell me, Betty, how much work is this?
Oh, there's lots of work. You can work up here every day, all day, if you wanted to. And we have to deadhead the roses, especially this time of year.
Yeah.
They're blooming and, and we have to fight the squirrels and the rabbits. The rabbits have been moving in. They love our flowers too, but...
So lots of work for you year round.
Year round. We have a few volunteers, but we could sure use a lot more.
So as we say, viewers, any of you with a few hours to spare, who wouldn't enjoy coming here and working in these wonderful gardens and making some new friends? So please come on and join Betty here and be a volunteer. You'll really enjoy it.
Yeah, it's very peaceful here because we're kind of out by ourselves in this park. And you can relax and forget all your problems while you're working the garden.
And that's what we need to do today.
Yeah.
So viewers, come on and join Betty. You're really going to be glad you did. Thanks so much to everybody here at the Chatsworth Historical Society. We've had a wonderful day. Join us next time for Aging Well in L.A.
An emergency can happen at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
The biggest blessing in life is to realize your personal power.
So many of us wonder, why are we living? Well, that's why we're living, to help others.
Community work brings families closer together.
When we help each other, we all get help.
Doing good for others, doing positive action always comes back around and enriches your life. It's the biggest gift you could ever give yourself.
Doing good is good for all of us. Please join us in volunteering.
Improve your health by helping others. Visit iparticipate.org.
G'day, Troy McCarver from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2011. We're in the John Farrar Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank those members of the public who have joined us here in council chambers, as well as those who are viewing us on Channel 35. There are five ways to follow your city council in action. We're here in person at downtown John Farrar Council Chambers, in person. You can also go to our two remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro City Halls, if that's closer to where you live or work, and not only follow the council, but also testify remotely from those locations. Third, you can watch us on Channel 35, the city's cable system, which broadcasts these meetings live and rebroadcast them each evening that we have a council meeting. And then finally, sorry, two other ways. Finally, you can listen in through your telephone by calling the following number, 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen into the council meetings as well as our full committee meetings. And finally, on the internet, at lacity.org, we have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. We also archive our past council meeting footage there. And all of the information of our agendas, which are made available three days in advance or a day in advance for our special meeting items, as well as supporting materials, are all online for your convenience. So all the reports that council members get are available for the public's interest as well, so good, different ways to follow along to the city council. I want to thank those council members who are here at the top of the hour on time per council regulations. That's council members Alakon and Englander, Wizar, Perry, and Zine. With myself, that makes six members of our currently 14 member body. We require 10 members of our usually 15 member body to constitute a quorum, or two thirds of the full membership. So we are waiting four more members to begin the meeting. We do not expect Mr. Krikorian, who's excused today on city business, as well as Mr. Reyes, who's excused on city business, to arrive at 11:30. With Mr. Labange here, that's seven. And so we are just awaiting council members Cardenas, Coretts, Parks, Rosendahl, and Wesson. And as soon as we have three more members, we will begin. For any members of the public who would like to be heard on items that are on today's agenda that have been noticed for public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back or in our remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro and hand that to one of the sergeants at arms or city staff, and we'll be sure to hear your comments during that section of the meeting. For other items that have already received a public hearing, you can also fill out a speaker card, but it requires a council member and a voted council to reopen that public hearing. There's also a section for a general public comment, which is for items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. And if any of those items you wish to be heard, sorry, any of that section you wish to be heard on, just fill out a speaker card and put general public comment in the upper right corner, and we will then be able to hear your comments. Again, I want to thank members of the public who are here today who've joined us. Thank you, Mr. Coretts. That takes us up to eight members. And just awaiting Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson, and we will begin very shortly. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and we'll begin shortly, as soon as we have a quorum. Thank you again to Council Members Alakon and Englander, Weezer, Coretts, Labange, Perry, and Zine. We are awaiting still Council Members Cardenas, Parks, and Wesson. Mr. Rosendahl, we've been informed, is running a little bit late, and Mr. Reyes and Mr. Krikorian are excused. So that leaves us with Council Members Wesson, and Parks, and Cardenas. Please make your way down right away. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Now we're just awaiting for Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Wesson. As soon as we have one more. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Communal resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Englander seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Since this is a Tuesday, we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag. Mr. Zine, would you be kind enough to lead us?
Raise your hand over your heart, ready to begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can run through the agenda, colleagues, any items you wish to call special? Now would be the time. So if you direct your attention to today's agenda, we have 49 items, of which there are some that have been agendized for public comment, others have had the hearing in committee. Again, it requires a council member to reopen those hearings. But if we can go through the first items, please.
Item number one is an ordinance notice for public hearing. For the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District, there is a card on this item.
Okay, we'll call that special. Next items?
Items 2 through 18 are Department of Building and Safety liens notice for public hearing. The department reports that items 5, 9, and 11 may be received and filed, and as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, we'll receive, we'll move to receive and file those three. And Mr. Rosendahl would like to call 13 special, I know, so we'll hold that on the desk for Mr. Coretts.
I'd like to continue item 17 for two weeks.
Okay. Two weeks would take us to October 25th. Without objection, we'll continue item 17. And Mr. Weezer?
We could either call number 15 special, or the lien has been paid on that one as well. We can note and file it, should we call it special?
Or receive and file? Okay.
Note and file number 15, please.
Okay.
That amount was reduced to $1,500, and the building safety advisory that lien has been paid.
Okay, we'll move to receive and file that. Thank you very much. So that will take the balance now. If we can open the roll on those that are left, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
All right, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 19 through 40 are items which...
We held 13 special for you. Item 13? Yep. We'll record Mr. Rosendahl's voting on those. Thank you. Next items?
Items 19 through 40 are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests to continue item 19 to October 18th, to continue items 21 to November 18th, and continue items 22 and 23 to October 14th.
There's no objection to those continuations. We will go ahead and do that. That leaves us with 20 and 24 through 40. Mr. Parks?
And 27 special?
Sorry, which ones?
24 and 27.
Okay, both of you, Mr. Alakon called 24 and 27. Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange?
40, please.
40, and Ms. Perry? 39? Okay, 39, special for Ms. Perry. Other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Next item, please.
Items 41 through 48 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, there's no objection. Those are now before us for consideration. We do have 12 members, so all these... Do we have cards on any of these items?
There are cards on items 41 and 42, and 47.
47, okay. We'll call those special for cards from the public. Are there special on 44? There's a card as well? 43, excuse me. All right. We'll call those special for cards from the public. Any other specials, colleagues? All right, if not, let's go ahead and we'll take up the balance. Please open the roll on 44 through 46. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
All right, those are approved. Next items?
On the supplemental agenda, item 49 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk for our closed session. And we will go ahead and take those up as soon as we are done as well. Okay, we'll check on possible reconsideration of 19. But we'll come back, in the meantime, to those...
Excuse me, Mr. President. I believe there's a request by Councilman 11 to, Councilman Rosendahl, to continue item 18.
Number 18? So we need to reconsider that?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Then we will... Continue that to what date, Mr. Rosendahl? Do we have a date certain?
Mr. President, you wish to hold on the desk for now. I believe Mr. Rosendahl stepped away.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and we'll hold that on the desk for Mr. Rosendahl, in the meantime. All right, we take our general public comment. Julie Wolf will be our first speaker. I'd like to come forward. We have two minutes per speaker and a clock there to help you guide your comments. And good morning to you.
Good morning. My name is Julie Wolf.
I'm sorry, before you begin, if I could ask, there's a lot of conversations that are happening, I know, around. If I could ask folks to either take their seats or to move their conversations outside, just out of respect to our public comment speakers. Thank you very much for your understanding. With that, thank you. Go ahead, we'll reset the clock for you. Go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Julie Wolf. I've been a member of the Los Angeles City Fire Department for 24 years, 13 of those years as an engineer. I'm currently assigned to Fire Station 63. As you all know, is located in Venice Beach. I was the engineer assigned to Engine 263 on the day of the porn shooting. Unfortunately, I've been ordered not to discuss the incident because it's still under investigation. But I can't stand by one more day and hear my fire department and my fire station get slung under the mud. As soon as this investigation is over, and I hope it's over soon, Councilwoman Zine, I would be more than happy to answer each and every one of your questions. In the meantime, let it be known that I am disappointed in the way that my administration and the media has handled this incident. To read in the newspaper that firefighters won't be facing disciplined actions because of a loophole? Really? Because of a loophole? Angers me. Angers me. How about firefighters are found not guilty? I'm not allowed to discuss the incident, but I'm here to tell the members of the City Council, and more important, the citizens of Los Angeles, that the members of the fire department did not participate or have anything to do or any knowledge of that photo shoot. Like I said, I've been a member of the department for 24 years. In conclusion, I've worked all over the city. Members of our fire department overall are doing an outstanding professional job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony this morning. We appreciate you being here. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that, will be Patricia McAllister.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Just go Google Walsh Confidential. There is no truth to the rumor that I, John Walsh, posed naked for a gay video in front of an L.A. Fire Department truck. And I think, I mean, it's, and I don't need a loophole to get out of that. Let me tell you, Garcetti, last week, big week for you. We've changed our, you know, we are, we have odds. We do odds on who's the next mayor. You went from 5 to 1 to 3 to 1. Because four of you showed up when I asked you down at Occupy L.A. Well, we've got a great idea. First of all, the ma, the police, or rather, the fire chief has stated that he sentenced himself. I like this new thing in L.A. Politicians sentenced themselves to punishment. He sentenced himself to 150 hours of community service. I am asking officially that the fire chief, his community service, should be down there helping the Occupy L.A. people with all the fire regulations and everything. I think it's a perfect place for him to go. We're also asking Occupy L.A., we are asking the president, and it is within your jurisdiction, to hold a meeting of the City Council, not in City Council chambers, but on the steps of the city, of this building, of City Hall, on that flat porch-like stone service. If you hold a meeting in support, you will have thousands of people, an open-air meeting. Have we ever had a City Council open-air meeting? And, incidentally, just to show you, it probably will elect you mayor of the city. Because people don't realize there is a youth vote. We want a meeting on the City Hall steps of City Council, so they don't have to come in here and show ID.
Thank you. Patricia McAllister is our next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Patricia McAllister. I'm a citizen of this city. I'm here to speak on my behalf and the behalf of the millions of other Californians who cannot come out to speak and camp out outside here. I wanted to speak to each one of you, especially the ones who are lying, stealing, cheating, and who are corrupt, which I would say most of you. I want to say that you think that you're setting aside monies for your children and grandchildren, but you're actually putting a curse on your entire family. And I like to say for every lie and things you've stolen, that your family from 10 generations from now will suffer. Our board members on L.A. USD, they are taking money from construction companies that they're signing off on for construction contracts. They're also accepting money over the limit of $1,000. Richard Vladovic has accepted $3,000 from SEIU Local 99 Los Angeles City School Employees Union. Monica Garcia, $1,500 from Hensel Thupp's Construction. This is all on the, this information is public on the Ethics Committee's website. I just left the Ethics Committee's meeting. They don't know anything about it, and it's on their website. I want an investigation of the Ethics Committee. They are supposed to make sure that you guys don't lie, steal, and cheat us out of everything, okay? I'm saying to you politicians that your days are limited with this lying, stealing, and cheating. Now, as far as you voting on the Occupy L.A., I don't care if you don't approve it. We wouldn't be there anyway if we waited for you to approve it. You're cold-blooded, calculating. Many of you would kill your grandmothers for a nickel. You will answer to everything that you've done, and everything that you've stolen, and every lie that you've told. God will hold you accountable, in Jesus' name.
Peter Thornton?
Good morning, Councilmen Garcetti, and Bill, and Mr. Alakon. I was here in 2008, August 2008, in our own Los Angeles-based preemptive Occupy Wall Street movement, when the bailout for $720 billion was announced. As some of you know, I'm a Venice Neighborhood Council elected official. I was chair of the Education Committee for a year. I've watched the public school system have 12 days in the average school's calendar chopped off. Seven days last year, five this year. All to preserve the salaries of administration and teachers in behest of unions and of powers that be. I'm out there, I've been out there five days for the last week. I resigned from the Neighborhood Council two months ago because of my disgust with the football stadium project that you guys are ramrodding down the city of Los Angeles's throat, fast-tracking a bankruptcy, all in the name of short-term jobs, without any view to the children of this city, to the long-term viability of a sustainable economic base. We're mad as hell, and we're fed up with being fed up. There are a lot of middle-class and upper-middle-class people out there. I'm one of them. I'm an attorney, I went to Yale, I used to work at Goldman Sachs. I have an MBA and a JD. I've been unemployed since February 2008. I have a son who's two and a half years old, all right? And I have come to two of the public hearings, the so-called transparency hearings on this AEG football stadium project. And I've been before you, and I've tried to convey my concern that you are fast-tracking a BS football stadium project in the name of getting short-term votes. Two of you are running for mayor next year, Jan Perry and Mr. Garcetti. I have respect for a lot of people on this council, and I know that some of you have stood up diligently and have gone to the tides, asked for transparency. But I think most of you are beholden to these law firms, these accounting firms, and these consulting firms, and these real estate developers in downtown L.A. And you are betraying the long-term interests of the citizens of this city and of their children.
Thank you.
And I speak as a parent when I say that.
Thank you.
I hope you support Occupy L.A.
Cheryl Eickley. Again, you have two minutes, folks, so please adhere to that. Cheryl Eickley, followed by Arnold Sachs. Again, two minutes, public comment.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Eickley, and I've been helping organize Occupy Los Angeles for over two weeks now, before it even became an occupation. I wanted to speak today during public comment about my concerns with the police brutality in other locations and to see if there's something that we can do as concerned citizens in Los Angeles to come together, maybe a town hall or something, to speak on the police brutality issues in other locations. The NYPD received some millions or billions of dollars from, I think, JP Morgan last week, and that's when they started to pull out their billy clubs and their pepper spray. We have not had any problems with the police in Los Angeles, and I really appreciate that. I do believe that has to do with our efforts to work with the city and the City Council support, some of the members on the City Council supporting us. The images are horrific. I don't know if you've seen them. For me, I have seen them, and they're discouraging, and they're disheartening, and they're sad, and they're infuriating. And I just want to know if there's anything that we in Los Angeles can do to come together to speak about the police brutality that's happening in other occupation locations. Last night, 100 people were arrested in Boston. They were told to left, leave. I understand my First Amendment right is I can peacefully assemble and say as I wish. And I want that First Amendment protected beyond anything. I think everybody here has sworn to protect that. I think every officer has been sworn to protect our constitutional rights. And I just want to know, as a city, what can we do to reach out to our brothers and sisters in other locations who were peaceful but were brutalized by police? And how do we avoid that happening here in Los Angeles? I really appreciate your time today, and I will be speaking on another item just as soon as it comes up. Thank you for your support and time, and I'll be back tomorrow in regards to the resolution that will be voted on in support of Occupy Los Angeles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Arnold Sachs, followed by Michael Pell.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Pretty amazing, some of the stories you read in the newspaper lately. Especially this Saturday, the 4th, there was a big story. The mayor is concerned that the state hasn't sent any money to the city to oversee the released prisoners that are going to be living in the city, probably over 4,000. Well, the mayor must not have been paying attention, because the county got the money. Every other county got the money. So why isn't the mayor, why aren't the councilmen? Where is the hearings for how this program will be overseen? The chief of police says he wants to take 150 officers and use them to oversee the probationers. So that means taking officers from every district. But no meetings, we had... But no meetings, we had meetings on the DNA here in the council chambers, no meetings about 4,000 prisoners being released to the city and how the city plans to absorb them and oversee them. Again, been to the county, the counties had plenty of meetings, and they're bitching and moaning about the fact they're not getting enough money. But they're getting the money. So why isn't anybody from the city over there asking about where's our fair share? And why would the city need to oversee county, county probationers? Do they oversee other county probationers? No. So what kind of smokescreen is the city, the mayor, and the council throwing up here? Why isn't anybody concerned? They're concerned at the county, but they're not concerned about the fact that the prison population in the state of California is at 180% of maximum. They're just concerned that the state's not doing its job. But you can be sure the Board of Supervisors is doing their job. All you needed to do is define what their job is. Oh, I know, get the money first. That's their job. And they do a pretty damn good job of it, too. It's only what they spend it on. That's the problem.
Michael Pell, two minutes, followed by Keith Evans. Again, public comment, two minutes, please.
Good morning, City Council. As tomorrow, I will probably be preparing for the holiday of Sukkot, and thinking that Mr. Alacan's resolution was going to be on today's agenda. I want, need to let you know, I oppose the resolution. It's well-meant, in good spirit, but I don't think is practical or in the city council's jurisdiction anymore than police activities in other cities are. What we have here is our people, well-attentioned, who want entitlements, I feel. And that's why I work on the Chabad telethon, to help people at our need. We are there to help. And in closing, a very good Sukkot, and especially to my great councilman, Mr. Coretts, good yentuv.
Thank you. Keith Evans. Keith Evans, two minutes, sir. Public comment.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this morning. I'm here to support Councilman Coretts's proposal on the legal, illegal, or to try to make illegal substance known as bath salts. I came in today to speak to everybody here, to let them know that this hits very close to home for me. My family is involved with our 24-year-old daughter. This is a picture of her. She recently was introduced to this drug by her boyfriend, who is a felon, convicted felon, has to go through mandatory drug testing. They have found a drug that is not illegal. They have found a drug that does not show up on drug tests. He has introduced it to her, and it is ruining her life. I apologize. It's, it's something that's affecting millions of people across this country. There seems to be very little knowledge, very little information out on this. And I was very pleased when, Councilman, when I learned that he was proposing this ordinance. I don't have the time to go in to tell you what it's done to my life, what it's done to my daughter and our family. But I ask you, please, to take very seriously his proposed ordinance and do what's right for all the youth in this country, or anyone that's involved in this, has no business being used in the manner that it is, and it's affecting people's lives. It's hurting people. If this ordinance can save or help one individual, it's worth it. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, sir. Julia Wallace. Julia Wallace, two minutes.
My name is Julia Wallace. I am one of the supporters of Occupy Los Angeles. I'm also a socialist member of the Los Angeles South Central Neighborhood Council. I wanted to speak on the situation with the city council. You've come out publicly to say you support us, and the police have come out publicly to say that they support us. But in reality, the politics that we've seen outside of those resolutions that are going to be passed have been not supportive of us. In the first place, all of you are part of the two-party system, which takes funds from corporations and banks that we are protesting and occupying against. And that's a problem, and that's a contradiction. In the second place, the Los Angeles Police Department has been executing crimes against people, of people of color and other working-class people in our neighborhoods, and that continues to happen. The city council continues to uphold and have, and the mayor continues to have checkpoints in our neighborhoods that take people's cars away. And Governor Brown just passed a resolution, or just passed a bill, actually, to limit that. But we think that any of those checkpoints are terrorizing our community. And Occupy Los Angeles, yesterday, two days ago, somebody was, who was undocumented, who was bleeding, they called the police, the police, we called 911. The police came, asked him if he had a social security number, and took him away. This is a problem. We don't think, or I'll speak for myself, but many of us here don't think that it's possible for you to actually and truly support us when you continue to take funds from the corporations and banks that we are opposing. And we think that, well, I think, and many people here think, that until that happens, we think that this is an attempt to co-opt our movement, and we won't allow it to happen. We will remain politically independent, and we're going to keep fighting against the banks, against the corporations, and against the 1% and those who defend them. Thank you.
Anchor Patel. It's a white card. It's a white card. It's been filled out here in chambers. Michael Hudson. Medina.
Honorable City Council, I'm an artist, and my language is music.
This will be a two-minute serenade.
people happy. And I'm very disillusioned that music will be banned, as you form it, entertainment and live music, acoustic music, not electrical, has made many, many people happy. And I've played in Covent Garden in London, and the Kudus Endom in Berlin, on many places in Europe, sharing my music with the world. And we are a very uncultured city if we ban music and street musicians. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Chinowah. Mr. Labonge.
Could I ask the speaker if he'd want to come to the ropes? I'd like to talk to him.
Sir. Mr. Labonge, like to speak to the violinist. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, City Council. My name is Pamela Chinowah. I am a resident of Los Angeles County. I am here on behalf of myself, as someone who is occupying L.A. It has come to our attention that you will be proposing to support us officially. I want that, from my point of view, to be known, that your support, it could be great. But we, as Occupy L.A., do not necessarily need your support. We don't need the validation, because we're already out there to prove that. Also, your support, like my friend said earlier, is slightly contradictory to what we're trying to do, because many people who run this system, you are part of this system, are corrupt. We're trying to get rid of that corruption. So please, if you do want to support us, do it in a real way. I would like to see people who are for this idea outside, helping us, occupying with us, rather than putting it on paper. Because you, we all know that the government can put many things on paper and act different ways. So if you want to put that on paper and announce it to the world, make sure your actions support that.
Thank you. Marlon Stern.
I've been at Occupy L.A. on and off since the beginning. I want to convey to you, the City Council of L.A., that this movement is working for the children, the lawyers, the doctors, the college students, the dishwashers, the bus drivers, and all the other people left behind by an ineffectual two-party system that has become so fat and bloated by large interest groups, the trickle-down has completely dried up. And people such as my sister face foreclosure in spite of working three jobs in efforts to keep a roof over the head of my two young nephews. We are facing unprecedented environmental disasters in addition to the economic disasters that we're currently in. And I believe it is imperative that everyone work together. You, as city workers, are part of the 99%. And if there is no environment, there is no economy, and there ultimately will be no money to pay your salaries. There won't be any money to pay my future possible salary. I have a BA in history, as I mentioned a week ago, and there is no employment for me. It's been two years. There is a way to do this, to have a come-down from consumer-based economics, and we're, we are trying to live our lives in a way that is not going to degrade the environment any further. That's, well, that's my opinion of what we're doing, and that's basically, I just wanted to convey that today.
Thank you. Justin Valas.
Good morning. Thanks for letting me speak here. So I'm a longtime listener, first-time caller at this event, and I'm one of the occupiers. It's a leaderless, well, it's actually a leader-full movement. That's one word, F-U-L. And that, I'm in here in support of the resolution that hopefully you guys will be passing tomorrow. And I just want to say, when you do pass that resolution, don't forget that you passed it. Things change, people change, politics change, situations change. But remember, the resolution that you pass tomorrow is for what's happening right now, and it's the same thing that we're continuing trying to, to do, which is to give, you know, power back to the people, to the general public, away from that 1%. And we're continuing to do that. And it's nonviolent, and it's peaceful, and that's what we're trying to keep it. So if you keep up your end of the bargain, we'll keep doing our end of the bargain, which is making things better for the people. Thank you.
Arminak Nourajanian.
Respectable City Council members, dear fellow Angelinos, my name is Arminak Nourajanian, and I'm a tax-and-spend liberal Democrat. I run for the seat of California State Assembly next year, and promise my constituency to unseat the reactionary incumbent, you know, and I propose a liberal reform for California. I propose, for instance, six-month paid pregnancy leave for all Californian women, paid by the state government. I also propose to raise taxes 50% against welfare individuals and rich corporations, who actually rip off Californian consumers every day. I also propose to raise a limit of, of, you know, speed limit on a high, on Californian highways and freeways, 20 miles up. And also propose to close down all illegal medical marijuana dispensaries, because 56% of California voters rejected Proposition 19 last year, according to MSNBC report. And actually, I support, I support Proposition 36, which enables Californian government to build more sanatoriums for substance abusers, alcoholics, and, and junkies of all kinds, you know, in order to somehow accommodate horrible vices. I also support Occupy Los Angeles movement, and I actually, because it's movement, it's an imperialist movement, and I also, which campaign against wasteful spending and corruption. And I demand that you council members cut down your egregious wages of $178,000 in half, and give that money to city workers, who are impoverished and receive below living minimum wage, below living minimum wages, you know. Let social justice rule this world. Let social justice prevail in this city. Let corruption leave your minds. What I think. And I believe that, also that, that actually, we should build more Section 8 housing for working poor, and take away money by taxing the wealthy people.
Thank you. Quasi Nakrama. Let's go to the Valley, Donna Piriman, Donna Piriman, San Fernando Valley.
Here I am. Sorry, Miriam couldn't come. Anyway, sorry, I missed the City Council on Friday. I didn't have the time off to take off. Anyway, I think it's a mistake to build a football stadium. How can you build a stadium? Remember, we have, remember the NBA, NBA strike? The same thing could happen with NFL. We'll lose a lot of money if that happens. We need a lot more money in Los Angeles than a football team who may decide to leave before it's even paid off. Remember those other teams that left? For, it's done for short-term jobs. Could we find fully-permed jobs with the city, and have more city employees? That would be nice. Sanitation is on schedule and contrue right now. They can use a lot more employees. Perhaps these people can go in jobs with the city. And secondly, I'm upset about, you said you want to have the public transit. We must not have a strike. I heard them possibly talking about strike. Well, virtually, virtually cut the city, well, hurt the city for a lot of people who, myself, who can't get around without buses. I will tell management, the MTA, you need, you have the money. Treat the bus drivers and mechanics right. This is over a small part of, and why we want to spend all this money on the rail. And we don't, they don't even treat the bus drivers and the mechanics right, and give them what they're due. We need, we need more 720 bus lines to Santa Monica. They're fully crowded, while two or three buses only go to Westwood, turn around, and while these people are trying to go, well, can't seem to go. Many want to continue. The middle-class employees, city employees, also help our city. They deserve the benefits they get. I'm sorry, there's so much unemployment in many areas, and, but it's not helped by the stadium. There's many jobs that people need, there's not help by the stadium. Let's get off of those who are responsible, the CRA, who dried up all our money. They are, they are not gone, it's just a road bump. So remember, folks, there's a lot of people that are a lot more responsible, it's not the city employees who are doing it.
Thank you.
[inaudible 00:01:52].
We're going to suspend the remainder of public comment. There's negotiations taking place regarding that. We'll come back to that with the council president when those discussions are complete. Let's move forward. There's been a request by Mr. Alacan to reconsider number four, request by Mr. Coretts for number 18 and 19 to reconsider. So colleagues, if we can open the roll on number four, 18 and 19 to reconsider. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
[inaudible 00:01:57].
Okay, so those items will be reconsidered. Madam Clerk, our next item, please.
Yes, I'm going to announce.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, would you wish to take up 19, 18 and 19 at this moment?
19, 18 and 19, Mr. Coretts. We have no cards on 18 or 19. And Mr. Alacan at number four, Mr. Coretts, 18 and 19. Mr. Alacan will get to you in a minute.
I believe 18 and 19 were confused. There was a request to continue 18 for two weeks, and instead, 19 was considered for two weeks. So I would just like to ask that 19 be put back on consent unless there's objection.
All right, so you want 18 and 19?
And I believe that 18 was, was asked by Mr. Reyes to be continued for two weeks.
All right, so 18 will be continued for two weeks, and 19, you want to vote on 19?
Yes.
Okay, on number 19, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
[inaudible 00:01:55].
That is approved. Mr. Alacan, number four, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Alarcon, Number Four, Mr. Corretts.
If I could go forthwith.
Forthwith.
Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon, Number Four.
Yeah.
Mr. Alarcon, Number Four.
On the advice of Council.
Mr. City Attorney, comment on Number Four.
If that item could be continued to tomorrow.
All right, so Number Four, without objection, will be continued tomorrow. Four is continued tomorrow. All righty, Madam Clerk, let's continue on then.
Item one called special for cards.
Item Number One, John Walsh and Arnold Sacks, Number One.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or just go to Walsh Confidential on Google. This is a very, very important item about the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District, special assessment. Incidentally, I pay these special assessments, because in the BID I live in, my landlord has to pay it, although it's residential. And of course, when the rents are raised, 3%, in fact, tenants in certain BIDs are forced to pay for business improvement. Of course, my landlord agrees with me, since he gets nothing out of the BID in Hollywood, just as I get nothing out of the BID in Hollywood. But, so, HollywoodHighlands.org. Let's have a meeting of the City Council right there, outside, at the top of the steps, and let's have the Fire Commissioner work for Occupy L.A. as a fireman.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Sacks. Number One, Mr. Sacks, two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I've had quite a few problems with the bids, but it wasn't until this article in the Downtown News from September 26th, regarding the problems with the downtown historic business corps, that some answers came about. Now, in this article, it said, currently, the bid, this downtown business district, spends 64% of its annual budget, of $1.3 million, on street cleanliness and public safety. So, the numbers come out to about $840,000 for those services, and $355,000 to administrate the bid. That's a lot of money to administrate a bid. You take those numbers across the City Board, and let's see how many bids are in the city at 35%, going to administrative fees, getting a budget of $1.8 million. That's quite a big pot of money you got there. But we know that you're open and transparent, and how many of those bids are city and county-owned properties and municipal-owned properties, that we also have heard vote to affirm the actions of the property or the Business Improvement District? Well, property business, property districts are different from business, but again, you're talking 35% of the budget for administrative fees. Not bad money if you can get it. So, is it possible to find out how many bids there are in the city, have it brought before the City Council, and just exactly how much is spent or allocated for administrative fees? Because maybe the city could use some of that money. And really quick, Item 19 and 18 were confused. You voted to reconsider 19, but you didn't vote to reconsider 18. You already passed it.
Thank you.
So, how can you continue it for two weeks?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sacks. On that item, colleagues, open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Do you, this is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold this item on the desk for 12 members?
Yes, let's hold it then. Mr. Alarcon asked that Item Eight be reconsidered, and continued for 30 days. So, on Number Eight, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
But opposition, Number Eight, is reconsidered for 30 days, I mean, continued for 30 days. Mr. Rosenthal, you have a comment?
Yes, nothing to do with that item, but colleagues, as you know, you see the flag that I just put up, and this is the flag of freedom for gays and lesbians, bisexual and transgender people on the planet. We're demanding our basic civil and human rights. Even in this country, we don't have it. The word marriage ties in all kinds of laws.
Excuse me, Mr. President, this is not on the agenda.
But the point I want to make today is October 11, 2011, and it's National Coming-Out Day. And the point of that day is true civil rights. If every gay, lesbian person out there tells their family a specialist...
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenthal, this is not on the agenda.
There's a tremendous connection.
Mr. Rosenthal, with all indulgence, let's bring this up under announcements at the end, to make it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. And we will again announce that at the end. With all due respect to the agenda, we will announce that at the end during announcements. So, we'll bring that up again. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, for Item Eight, which was continued for 30 days, 30 days is a holiday, so the next council meeting would be November 15th.
That'll be fine, November 15th. Next item, please.
Next item is Item 13, called special by Councilmember Rosenthal.
Mr. Rosenthal, we have one card.
Yes.
Number 13.
This item, leave it to desk, we're working out the issue right now.
Okay, so let's hold Number 13, hold 13 on the desk. Next item, please.
Item 24, called special by Councilmembers Alarcon and Parks.
Number 24, colleagues, we have a number of cards. Arnold Sacks, Number 24.
Well, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. While you're going over this city bond program, have you come to a resolution, because I know that this is an occurring problem? Have you come to a resolution regarding the fact that getting the bonds sponsored by banks only pertained, or the situation you find yourself in is, are the banks willing to allocate funding or the bonding, or banks that are having, that are involved in lawsuits against the city? So, have you come to a resolution on how you plan to resolve that problem, where the majority of banks that you're dealing with, and giving you funding, or on the other hand, involved in lawsuits against, with the city, the city claiming mismanagement and other things? We have yet to have a hearing on how you resolve that situation, and where else can you look for the funding? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cheryl Eickley.
My name is Cheryl Eickley. I'm a citizen of Los Angeles. I just found out about Item Number 24. I have some of my Occupy Los Angeles colleagues with me in the back of the room. They do want to fill out comment cards on this, and they're not getting enough time to do so. So, if we could give them a moment to fill out the cards and speak on this topic, I would appreciate it. I'm in opposition of the city voting on banks that the city will be working with for the next three years today. There is a resolution that you will be voting on tomorrow. That resolution calls for fair banking and like a scoring for the banks that the city will work with. I would prefer the city wait on this item and allow us to go through the fair banking, so that the banks that we work with, we know are actually in it for Los Angeles. They're helping Los Angeles homeowners, they're helping Los Angeles small businesses, they're helping nonprofits and community organizations. I do not want you to vote on this today. I would like you to wait until after October 28th, when the resolution tomorrow is voted on. If it's passed, that will be the time for you to vote for the fair banking aspect of it. Please do not vote on this today. Table it, and wait until we have a better process. And also, give my colleagues an opportunity to fill out their opposition cards, their speaking cards, so that their opposition can go on public record. I appreciate your time today, and I think it is in all of our best interests to work with banks that work with us and that care about our community, and empower us, and give us the money that we need to be a better community, and don't use our money against us to hurt us and to cause even more problems. I saw the list of banks you're considering. They're some of the worst in the world, and they've caused a lot of economic inequalities around this city, around this state, across this country, and around this world. And we really need to think about the banks that this city works with, because it's very important. We're one of the largest cities in America, and the banks that we choose to work with are very important, and we should not jump into this. Three years is a very long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kimberly Cononis. Kimberly Cononis. No Kimberly. Peter Thotham? Thotham, is it Thotham?
It's Thotham. Dennis, it's Thotham. Peter Thotham.
Thank you, Peter.
I used to work for one of those banks, Goldman Sachs. You're going to essentially take public money, like you've done with the L.A. Convention Center, Staples Center, with these signed allocations for Phil and Schultz, AEG, and you're going to give enormous profits to these banks. These banks have destroyed the U.S. and global economy. The real estate crisis that took place 2007, the crash that was heralded around the world, and it's being played out in Europe now, was entirely a function of a Ponzi scheme, housing market, and related structure set up by investment banks like Goldman Sachs, Bank of America, and then many of the banks on your Pool A, Pool B, Pool C, Pool D list. City Council members, it's time for you to stand up, to recognize that these investment banks are one of the major reasons, if not the major reason, that you have 300 to 400 people out there on the lawns of this building, the north and south lawns. They do not want you, the people of Los Angeles, do not want you to betray them by awarding them their taxpayer dollars, so that they can benefit from real estate Ponzi schemes in downtown L.A. and the like. We want you to draw a line in the sand, to say that the firms that were primarily involved in the mortgage-backed securities, the AEG debt collateralizations of 2007, 2008, 2009, need to pay a penalty, that they will not get contracts from your government, your custodians of our money, recognize that these crooks on Wall Street need to be held accountable. If it's not going to happen in D.C., then let it begin here. That's what this movement around the country is about, demanding that our elected officials hold us, hold these banks accountable, and finally stand to represent us.
Mark Lippman. Followed by Jamie Garcia.
Good morning. I don't know how I can better echo my colleagues' words here. I'm part of Occupy L.A., been here since the first day. This is the reason why we're camping on your front lawn, because we are so opposed to the criminality of these banks. Today, you were supposed to vote on a resolution supporting us. Instead, that was put off to tomorrow, so that you can pass this beforehand to support the banks. Last week, all of you, well, minus two, stood up and echoed support for the work that we're doing to hold the banks accountable. Today, I'm asking to hold you accountable for those words that you so eloquently put on us, of your support to hold the banks accountable. This list here, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, Goldman Sachs, J.P. Morgan, these are the ones who have gutted our economy, who have destroyed our world. It is inconscionable to vote to give these guys our money. I don't see one credit union on this list. How can you go and say, on one hand, that you support us, and on the other hand, stab us in the back? Please, I urge you to reconsider, with everything that's in your soul, what you're doing here today. Thank you.
Jamie Garcia. Followed by Suzanne O'Keefe. So, Garcia, followed by O'Keefe. Jamie Garcia, followed by Suzanne O'Keefe.
Hi, my name is Jamie Garcia. I'm a registered nurse at White Memorial in Boyle Heights. All I have is a personal story to tell right now. I wish I could speak more eloquently about economics, but my business is medicine. Right now, for everybody in this room, I want you to know, the hospitals are being affected by the economic crisis that we're in right now. So, all of us are a part of this. I want you to know, as working as a floor nurse, there are things that are changing dramatically. Whether or not we know as a state that these changes are happening, I want you to know as far as patient care, they are happening. Now, I want the City Council to realize and to tell me how they are planning on holding these banks accountable for their action, watching what they're doing, being sure they're doing it appropriately, if the federal government could not do it to the banks on Wall Street. How is Los Angeles County, or city, going to do this? How are they going to guarantee to me that they are capable of doing this? It doesn't seem like they are, if they can't do it on a federal level. So, my concern is, is what's going to happen to the city? Things are already happening in my hospital, because we don't have money. I have an consultant agency that is not versed in medicine, telling me how safe it is for my patients, how many CNAs I need to help me on the floor with my five patients, how many patients my charge nurse is supposed to have, and she's supposed to be a resource to me on the floor. How are you going to guarantee me that you can hold these people accountable? My mother was a loan officer for B of A. She was bilingual. She helped people who could not speak English appropriately read through those contracts. She stopped a lot of contracts from going through for housing, because she knew they did not understand what they were getting involved in. They did not, they could not afford this, while her manager told her, "It's all right, just push it through, push it through." My mom doesn't work for B of A anymore, and I'm very, very proud to say that. I am so proud to say that. But I want to know how all of you plan on holding these banks accountable with our money? Because right now, I don't believe it. I just don't believe it.
Suzanne O'Keefe, followed by Catherine Knox-Davies.
Hello, Council. I just want to echo what people have been saying. I am writing a book. I am here with Occupy L.A., because I know the fraud that these banks have perpetrated on you, and me, and everyone else here. The fraud is so massive, that it is beyond mortal comprehension. And what are we going to do? We can stand up here, and we can say, "We're not working with you anymore." And why should, in fact, why should we pay our debts to you, because you have defrauded us? And we are here because we are not fools. We know that Congress is beholden to these institutions, and we cannot count on them to bust their benefactors. So, we are coming to the local groups, we are coming to you, we are saying that we are not wanting to work with these banks who have defrauded this country, and we insist that you take a stand here and say, "We're going to vet these banks, to make sure that they are not in the same practices, they're not in the same..." The people that ran them into the ground are not in the same positions. They are being investigated, and they are being made held accountable. This is very important for us. This is why we are here, this is why you are here, so that you can help this right, this wrong. I think that you know this. I think that this is why you're all here. So, I thank you, and I thank you for your support, and you're listening, and thanks.
Thank you. Catherine Knox-Davies. Followed by Julia Wallace.
I live at Occupy L.A. Several of my, I don't know, fellow peoples have spoken today to you about this thing. And I just wanted to express how grateful we are that tomorrow, we are hoping, that it's going to be pretty much unanimous, that you guys are going to support us. But just keep in mind that your actions here, at this point of power, we are watching, and we're not sure if we can support you. Just keep that in mind. Support us, so we can support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Wallace, followed by Carol Francis-Likings.
Hello again, Julia Wallace, supporter, member of Occupy L.A. I think that the one word that comes to mind for this to be voted on really is hypocrisy. It's hypocrisy to take a vote and to say, "Well, you know, we're going to have these banks come in, we have these banks down the street, but then we support Occupy L.A." In what sense do you support Occupy L.A. when we're occupying the front lawn, because we're against the banks and financial institutions? It makes absolutely no sense. And I think that these banks are not capable of holding themselves accountable. It's the fox watching the hen house. They're not capable of doing that, they don't want to do it. What's the money that's in the banks? It's our money. I think that instead of us, I think that it's fine to put restrictions on these banks, but really, we need to nationalize them, and the community needs to control where our money goes. money goes. These people aren't interested in controlling our money except for putting it in deportation centers, helping other dictator, helping other Democratic elected governments get overthrown, and other banks have participated in that, and basically causing misery around the world. It's ridiculous. And the fact that this was supposed to be put forward today as kind of a sneak move and then tomorrow it was going to be a rah rah rah, we're not going for it. And that's another thing, until you, as a board, and members of the board, refuse to participate in these corporate parties, these corporate political parties that are bought and paid for by the banks, the Democrats and the Republicans and other parties too, then it's going to keep happening. Then you're not able to represent us because you're standing with the people and you're receiving money from the people that are actually the ones that we are opposed to. So I think, for one, you need to, for people who really support us, you need to check which party that you're part of, and if you're part of a party that's receiving corporate and bank funds, that you need to leave them and get rid of that. And that those banks, since it's our money, we need to control, we need to nationalize all the banks and financial institutions under working community control. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Francis-Likens. Followed by Christopher. Again, two minutes. Item number 24.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Looking forward to the passing of the resolution supporting our occupation in Los Angeles tomorrow. But I'm really concerned about this. As I said a few days ago when I was here, I was a teacher in inner city for two and a half decades, and as what the banks have done to the most vulnerable of our people is just really horrible. And to think that you're going to vote to, possibly vote to, give our tax money to banks that have been opposing us is horrendous. But I want to say that at the occupation, we have marches, joining with labor unions and other organizations, and sometimes, yes, with Occupy L.A. people. And the number of honks we get, the number of people who hold up their fingers and V's, give us a peace sign, is overwhelming, is just amazing. I've been an activist for a long time, and I'm used to a certain number of people supporting us if we have an anti-war march, or a anti-foreclosure march, or whatever. But now, I mean, everybody out there knows what the 99% is. And the 1% is the ones that are asking you to give them our tax money. And we say, "Don't do it."
Christopher, no last name. Daniel Gonzalez. Travis Shivers. Okay, there's two of them. Which one's which?
I'm Christopher.
All right, Christopher.
I actually do have a last name. My name is Christopher Barrett. I'm a veteran, I'm a student, I'm a brother, I'm a citizen, and I'm an occupier. I've devoted my life to this cause, completely walked away from everything I have, my baby brother, my mom, my dad, all my friends and family, to devote myself to this. It's easy to attack, it's easy to lash out. A lot of us are angry and upset. But what I want to share with you is that we're actually building a new society here. I understand why it's so easy to fall into the bank's hands, why it's so easy to pass the same legislation over and over again, because that's how it used to be to survive. That was the only way. But now, we remember our history, and the scary thing is, we're repeating it. We're repeating it. We've had bank, we've had economic occupation. Third world countries have, live under military occupation. We live under a banker occupation. We're liberating all of us. When we talk about the 99%, I'm saying, but it's going to be the 99.1, .4, .8, and then 100. It really is all of us, all of us. And so, again, I'm in my PJs, my hair's a mess, I'm not very articulate or well thought out, but I woke up this morning and I said, "Hey, no, this is why we're here, to remind us, we don't need to be afraid. We are the people, you are the people." So please, again, we are here to keep ourselves in balance, to take direct democratic action to have a truly representative republic. Thank you.
Daniel Gonzalez. Travis Shivers. Antonia Craig. So Daniel Gonzalez. So no Daniel Gonzalez, no Travis Shivers. Antonia Craig. Which one are you, sir?
Shivers.
Shivers, okay. Travis Shivers, go ahead, sir. Travis?
Hi. I'm here today, guys, because I want America to be a good place again. When I was young, I was really proud of being American, and we were a really beautiful place to be, and that's changed, and we all know it. Now, personally, we all want the same thing, we all want to be happy. You guys are there because you want to be happy, all the ambition you've used to get to where you're at is because, at the end of the day, we're all human, we want happiness. And the only, only way we're going to get to that is to, you know, remember what makes us happy, which is coming together, taking care of your family, taking care of people, doing the right thing, doing things that make you feel good about yourself, having self-esteem, you know? And this is a chance today, guys. Everyone in this room, everyone alive right now, hearing this, has a chance to change the world. You guys have a tremendous power, and it's the difference between your own happiness. Money doesn't make us happy. If money made you happy, why would these billionaires keep going? If money made you happy, why do people keep going and being vicious about it? I don't know what you guys get out of the banks, or what your personal investment is with this whole thing, but come on, guys, don't you want to walk out of here and feel good about yourselves? Look into people's eyes that you represent and know that they're proud of you and that you really represented them? I mean, how bad do you really want to be happy? Because it's not in, it's not in this BS that's going on with the banks, guys, come on. You guys have so much power, and you were born to do this, this is why you're alive. It's no randomness that you're here, this is Los Angeles, guys, we're hip people, we follow, people follow what we do forever. This is your chance to make a difference in the whole world. Do you guys feel that? That's it, the battle inside, because that's real. And this is your chance to make a difference. Please do it.
Then after that will be Sarah Connor. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I just sort of fell into Occupy L.A. I just finished a bicycle trip down the coast and have been hearing about the Occupy Wall Street movement and seeing it in different cities along the way, and I'm just inspired about how quickly they've been able to get all of these people into this room. And I'm like, can't say that I'm incredibly educated about item number 24. I've been convinced in about five minutes that I'm against it, so I'll say that. But yeah, support this, support this movement. Like, I wouldn't be in this room, there are so many people who are in this room who just wouldn't, wouldn't have a way, or wouldn't know how to get involved or engaged, and it's just really amazing and moving for me to see all of this happen and listen to all these people speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Connor. Followed by Michael Oren. And for my colleagues, we have approximately one hour's worth of cards from the speakers, so continue, please.
My name is Sarah Connor. I'm here in, with Occupy L.A., and I would just like my opposition to number 24 to be recorded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Oren. Followed by Eddie Betts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A new beginning is upon us throughout the world. Big change is going to happen, no matter what your vote is. That's what I see. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Eddie Betts. And while you have two minutes, if you want to do it quicker, you have that option.
Hello, my name is Eddie Betts, and I am here because I am voicing my opposition against item 24. And I'm just going to say that I oppose it because as many banks that are involved with this proposition, I believe that they should be held accountable for, you know, what they distribute. You know, you can't have, or J.P. Morgan, no, it was the, one of the CEOs of Chase, he donated $4.9 million to the, to the police, and it's like, what about the, what about the schools? What about the, what about education? What about, what about love? And what about jobs for... But yeah, I just want to hold them, you know, personally accountable for, for the economic inequality that has been run rampant among the world, and that's all.
Devin Walters.
Hi, my name is Devin Walters, and I'm a mother, and I, I'm against this because it's just plain wrong. It's as simple as that. I don't want a scary future for my child, and I'm sure that your parents don't want a scary future for your children. It's, it's plain and simple. It's probably not going to affect us that quickly, us, but it's going to affect our children. And this law being passed, this item being passed, is just a segue to a million different things being passed that are scary for our children, that aren't fair for our children, and they're not going to be, we're not going to have opportunists for our children anymore. They're not going to be opportunists, they're not going to have anything fair in their life anymore that we certainly have right now, as of right now. So can we just stop being selfish and think about the children? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ramaz Iskander. I just want my opposition to this item to go on public record. Thank you.
Rob Fisher.
Hi, I'm Rob, and I'm an occupier with Los Angeles, supporting this worldwide movement to hold our governments and individuals accountable for how they direct our money and where it is going. And with that being said, and with me being an occupier, I'm in total opposition of item number four for those reasons, because these banks have not shown that they are responsible enough to take care of our money, to direct it in the right places. And I'm kind of confused because you guys said that you are supporting us tomorrow. We'll be presenting a resolution to support us. If you support us, this bill should not be passed. That's all I have to say. Rob Fisher, thank you.
Erin, it looks like Smill, Smillin? Erin, it could be S.M.L.L.I.O.N.
I just want to go on record that I just want 24 to be recorded, that I oppose, I oppose just 24.
Do you mind stating your name for the record, sir?
Erin Sullivan.
Thank you. Erica Aguirre.
Hello, my name is Erica Aguirre, and I live here right now. I love my country, the same way you still love a family member who's gone and become an alcoholic or a drug addict. You hope that they'll get better, and this is what we're here for, is encouraging you guys, encouraging our, the family that we have, that, you know, we're born into, our country, encouraging it to get better, because it needs to, and it's sick. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Jared John Peck. Jared John Peck. Jared John Peck. Okay.
My name is Jared John Peck, and I'm here to publicly support the Occupy L.A. movement, and I'm here to show my support for everything we're standing for, because I'm just one of many people that are directly affected by everything that's going on, because it's a global picture, and I think it's about time you start looking at it. That's all I have to say.
Elise Whitaker.
In the interest of time and concision, I don't feel the need to really elaborate anymore, but I would like it to be noted that I am against item 24.
Kathleen Scott. Kathleen Scott.
Hello, my name's Kathleen Scott. I'm with Occupy L.A. Pushing through legislation like this, or rules like this the day before, this is the sort of political weaseling and waffling that made me sleep in a tent last night because I don't see any other option anymore. I don't trust you guys, I did the right thing, I voted for some of you. And I researched what you believed in, and I listened to your campaign promises, and then you do this sort of thing, pushing stuff forward the day before good stuff can happen. And I am so tired of it. I'm here to publicly record my opposition to number 24.
John Walsh. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, member of Preoccupy L.A., because I was here before anybody else, and I'm preoccupied with L.A. Steve Jobs is dead, Bob Hope is dead, Johnny Cash is dead. You know what that means? We're facing a future with no jobs, no hope, and no cash. You know, I'm not a banker, I'm a depositor, but I know I can read what this is. This is called underwriting. These banks spend a half an hour filling out forms, and they're paid by the city millions of dollars. Who are these banks? Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Citigroup, Goldman Sachs, J.P. Morgan, Scrooge McDuck, Barclays Capital, just about every banker in the world is here, and you're giving them a free ride. And I'm telling you now, the secret bank here is Loop Financial. It's a Chicago bank, unlike all the other banks, because that's hooked in with Rahm Emanuel, and President Obama, and Garcetti and the mayor are pushing deals for this bank. Now, you might not have seen this on cable news, but you see it on HollywoodHighlands.org. So why don't we have an open-air meeting next week? Why don't you have a special meeting on the steps of City Hall where we can surround you and the whole world will be watching? You can hold a meeting outdoors, and you can hold it, it doesn't have to be a special meeting, all it has to be is agendized 72 hours earlier. Dónde es el alcalde? Our mayor is every place, except in a tent. And I, we want the fire chief to be, work his community service down at Tent City. HollywoodHighlands.org, all we are saying is give peace a chance. Thank you.
Michael Dalton Salisbury. Michael Dalton Salisbury. Michael Dalton Salisbury? Okay, I'll go on to the next card. Richard Paul Peterson. So Richard Paul Peterson. Okay, so Richard Paul Peterson's not here. Natalie Sanchez. Natalie Sanchez. Natalie Sanchez, okay. C. Javier Rodriguez. C. Javier Rodriguez. Celeste Cook? Oh, all right. Are you Mr. Rodriguez? Okay.
I'm just here to publicly announce that I oppose item 24.
Thank you. Celeste Cook?
Hi, I'm Celeste Cook. I'm, I'm just a youngster from Rancho Cucamonga, but I've seen how these banks... I'm, I'm just a youngster from Rancho Cucamonga, but I've seen how these banks and how these foreclosures on homes have affected my friends. I was lucky enough to have my father, who has a job that has held up, but who knows if it's going to be there tomorrow? I was lucky enough to have a home that is secure for a couple more months at least. But I've watched these banks tear my families, my, my friends' families apart. I've watched my friends be forced out of their homes. I've watched families be ripped apart because of their inability to pay for certain things, because of their, their lack of money that you guys have. You guys have it, these bankers have it. You guys are living the good life and so are they. And what do we have when this is our money? This is our money and needs to go back to the community. This is our hard-earned cash that we worked for and it needs to come back into our communities. Thank you.
Rebecca Hale. Rebecca Hale.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Hale and I'm here with Occupy L.A. And I just want everyone to know that none of this nonsense will change until the American people take back the public utility, which is television. Because otherwise, none of this will ever change and we will take back that public utility. We'll make it our own so that our views can be shown to ourselves, to our communities, to our country. This is what we're here for. We have to take back this country. And I hope that you vote accordingly with what's good for the people because you are the people, you are part of our 99%. You're not billionaires, you're not corporate heads. So there's nothing in it for you to, to do this for them. You know, be with us. We are the people, we are your people, you are our people.
Sergio Baez Terros.
Hello, my name is Sergio Baez Terros. The first thing I kind of want to make note of is, I've seen actually a lot of disrespect on the board. There are a lot of sidebar conversations, there are a lot of snickers, there's a lot of laughter. I don't think this is funny at all, in any way, shape or form. Now, we might look like a ragtag bunch of hippies at the moment because we've been sleeping in a tent, but we are not. We are educators, some of us are engineers, some of us are computer designers. We are intelligent people and we are your people, okay? We are of you, we are together. There does not need to exist a divide between us. Are you not people who have friends and family that are suffering under this economic situation? Are these not realities for you? We don't have to exist apart from each other. I know we are caught up in a system that, that seems impossible to escape, but it does not have to be that way. We can come together, we can create new solutions and that is what we are about. If you are going to endorse us, then be about us. That's all I have to say.
Matt Ward. Matt, Matt Ward.
Until a few weeks ago, I worked as a political consultant. It was pretty cushy.
Excuse me, sir, would you identify yourself?
My name's Matt Ward. Uh, until I worked, until recently, I worked as a political consultant. It was quite cushy. And Councilman Labonge knows actually that I was pretty decent at it because I'm pretty sure if we'd gotten started with our campaign before those absentee ballots went out, you might not be sitting here right now, but I'm glad that you are because I do like you. Uh, Councilman Rosendahl, I'm glad that you're having a good conversation there. I would like to point out that I'm really glad that you got a cup of coffee because when you sit there and you fall asleep in your chair, you might as well not be here and we know the system is broken and it really mocks nobody but yourself. So, so the real problem with what's going on here is that it's very easy to take money. It's very comfortable to take money. Money starts to come in from all kinds of places whenever you start to feel a little bit successful, whenever you start to get a little bit of power. The problem is, that isn't your money. When that money goes into a bank, it's not your money anymore, it's their money. Presently Goldman Sachs rules the world and it rules the world because it is impossible to reach any achievable state of position in this country without being bought and paid for. You guys are some of the lowest rungs of elected government and I'm not saying that to, in, in any way to impugn what you're doing because it's tremendous. But this is only going to get worse. You guys are here, I assume that you chose to endorse Occupy L.A. because you're trying to get out in front of what you think is a force of nature and you're right. You guys are embracing your reelection pursuant behavior and I support that fully. The problem is, you are attempting to still operate within a system that is completely defunct and until you're ready to take a step back and actually have some courage for once, this is never going to change. Thank you.
Patricia McAllister. And if everyone would state their name for the record.
I'm Patricia McAllister. I'm a computer scientist. My degree is in computer science, Chicago State University, 1988, and I'm also a teacher. Uh, we need to know the history of these banks. See, that's where we may be falling short. These banks got their wealth, and we're talking about Goldman Sachs, Morgan Stanley, J.P. Morgan, from slaves. They were the merchants and the bankers during slavery in the South. That's how they got that money, brought it up North, they had the banks down there. And they're doing the same thing here. They're cold-blooded, just like during slavery. You know, that was cold-blooded. My great-grandfather was born in slavery. He was born in 1862, died in 1962 at 100 years old. So I know what I'm talking about. Okay, so let's talk about black people. We have three blacks in this chamber here. We have Wesson and, um, we have Ms. Perry here and we have Bernard Parks. I haven't heard you say one thing about black people. We are, uh, our black people are suffering. I see a handful out there when they should be out there marching and everything else. I don't see the blacks doing a darn thing on this committee to help black folks. We need to read more, there's a book called The Secret Relationship Between Blacks and Jews. Now, I know I said a word that I shouldn't say and that's a Jew word, but I'm going to say it, I'm not afraid of any of you, okay? And that's who's running these banks. We need to be real about what's going on out there, okay? There's no sense in trying to hide who's running this and they're cold-blooded. And I'm not just talking about regular, hard-working Jews, I'm talking about these Zionist Jews. That's who I'm talking about. So let's know that there are some good Jews. Now, I want to see these black, uh, three blacks on this, uh, uh, city council, I want you to speak up more about and help your people. You should have your black people out here marching. I don't see any of your, your constituents, you represent thousands of black people. I don't care how much you mingle with these white folks and these people with money, I'm talking to these three blacks.
Madam President, I know she's talking about...
You'll never rise more high, you'll never rise higher than your...
No, she's, she's not talking about this item.
Thank you. Brian Rich. Brian Rich. Brian Rich. Michael Pell. Michael Pell.
Thank you, Madam President. I support this item.
Are you Michael Pell?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I am Michael Pell. I am a proud resident of the 5th District and I support this item because I, for one, maybe one of the few in this room, that actually trusts you around the horseshoe because you have all the facts and will do, I trust you to do the right thing on this. I wonder what banks we're supposed to deal with? Is it supposed to be the North Korean National Bank? Is it supposed to be the First Bank of Tehran? And besides the fact that Goldman Sachs probably had nothing to do with slavery, because I don't think there were that many Jews even in this country then. That's subject to change. But I know you're going to do the right thing on this. And I'm prepared for the booing. Thank you.
Nick Stormer. Nick Stormer.
Hi, I'm Nick Stormer, for the record. Former employee of U.S. Bank, I also wrote a thesis on the global credit crisis. I see item 24 as an opportunity. An opportunity to send a message to the banks, banks that put us, largely put us in the position that we're in. We need to send a message and scrutinize this list, take many banks out, add some, and put a list of banks that share our ideals of how to, how to use our money, how to prosper that money and how not to put us in the economic condition we are in today. So please, send a message to those banks. All it takes is you guys and that, that'll get news coverage and that'll spread. Thank you very much.
Poncho. Poncho.
Hello, um, I'm Poncho and I just wanted to say I'm with Occupy L.A. for the moment and I'm occupying this place in the earth and there's people all around the world that are sacrificing. They're sacrificing every night that they sleep in a tent and they eat the sloppy oatmeal stuff that we had for breakfast today. Not that I don't appreciate it, it was scrumptious when I mix it with the tea. But, uh, there's people sacrificing every day and we're here collecting together as a group because we are willing to sacrifice to do something great. And like most things that are great, it takes sacrifice and I hope you guys can think about and make your sacrifices. Thank you.
Paul Leal. Paul Leal.
Hi, my name is Paul Leal. First of all, I do want to thank you guys for being here and listening so attentively to us. We love this city and we did vote for you guys and we want you to represent us in the best way possible. I know that every single person here loves this city and the reason that we're here is we don't want our Los Angeles associating with the worst banks in the country that hold the rest of us down. So, um, I know that the price of a, of an opposition is a constructive alternative and I'm not an economist, but I, I hope there are some credit unions out there that the city could create a, a relationship with. And I, I would be very proud, um, as an Angelino, to see that kind of relationship between our city and those kinds of institutions. So yeah, I'm opposed 24. Thank you.
Evelyn Roberts.
My name is Evelyn Roberts and I want to preface this by saying that I understand there are special demands on every city employee and that we're all part of the 99%. This is my first time at a city council meeting, unfortunately and to be, unfortunately, and to be honest, I'm a little disappointed. If this building and the educated public servants in it are the paragon of the, of the democratic process, then I am more embarrassed for the state of democracy than I am to be presenting in front of you in the clothes I wore yesterday. Perhaps you've seen my peers and I outside practicing a real representative democracy. It's a messy process, to be sure. There is yelling, cussing, dramatic exits. Perhaps it's rudimentary, but I vastly prefer our impassioned interest. You have been reading the paper, talking and eating while we take part in your process following your rules. I must remind you, we do not need you. We have been camped on your yard for a week and a half without your support and we will continue to occupy the world with or without your consent. Ultimately, what I ask is that if you care so much about giving the banks money that you would go behind our backs to quietly pass this contentious proposal, at least have the decency to feign interest in what we have to say about it. Thank you.
Sharif Zakhar. Sharif Zakhar.
My name is Sharif Zakhar and I would like to voice my strong opposition against item number 24 as an occupier of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Taylor Holly. Taylor Holly.
Hi, um, my name's Taylor Holly and I'd like to say that I oppose Prop 24 or, um, item 24, sorry. Um, I know that it's not easy to support the underdog and that's what we are. We may be the 99, but we are definitely not on top. Banks don't care about you. The banks care about you probably as much as you care about us, but we're the ones that'll have your back. We're the ones that, when the banks say, "All right, we don't care about the government anymore, we don't care what you have to say and we're going to do what we're going to do." The 99 are the ones that are going to stand behind you. We ask that you vote down 24. Thank you.
Jean Donovan. Jean Donovan.
Hi, it's Joan Donovan. Thank you. I am a sociologist and graduate student at UCSD. Councilman Coretts is my Westwood council member. I had to move to L.A. in June because I was laid off from my job as a community college professor and, um, I'm proud to be a Los Angelino and I want to publicly oppose item number 24 for the following reasons. I believe that, um, when we utilize private banks for public funds, we do a disservice to the idea of a public commons and we need to reestablish that the public should own property and that the public should be very critical of the ways in which we circulate our own funds through these private banks. I have taken a look at the list and many of these are also subsidiaries of the big four banks, Wells Fargo, J.P. Morgan, Goldman Sachs, et cetera. And so what I would like to call for is that we make sure that any funding that is used for the purpose of the public commons, which would include education, health, economics, the press, housing, agriculture, leisure, work, or all public utilities, be returned to a public commons bank and that you should not pass this item. You should consider the Occupy L.A. resolution of having a fair banking, um, discussion and possibly amendment to your, um, policies. I yield the balance of my time. Thank you.
Jesse Dotson. Jesse Dotson.
First, I would like it formally noted that I object to item 24 and second, I would just like to say that I have never seen a more diverse sample of the population that I live in, in my life. And I, this is of, by and for we, the people, and this is us.
Marco Burito. Marco Burito. Sorry, Mario Burito.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mario Burito and on most days, I'm a resident of Lincoln Heights, Ed, and, but today and for the last week, I am a resident of Occupation L.A. What makes Occupation L.A. wonderful is that we are blacks, browns, Asian, gay, lesbian, straight, Christian, Catholics, Jews, atheists, we're all together because we realize one thing, we are fighting for our democracy. We are fighting to make this world a better world. This item number 24 really goes against the grain of what we're talking about. We need to hold banks responsible. We need to hold the people who brought us to this economic tragedy responsible. We cannot just continue to reward them with continuous payments and, and interests when they have done nothing for our communities. How many of us have, our communities are disenfranchised with low, with high unemployment? Ms. Perry, you know your community is affected by unemployment. Ed, you know our community is affected by unemployment. I don't need to go over how, how deeply this recession has affected our communities, communities of color. But not only communities of color, it's hit the middle class, it's hit the entire population. What I urge you is to hold banks responsible and take example from banks during the, during the depression era that formed, the states, in fact, the state of North Dakota formed their own bank. We should be forming our own bank so we can actually make sure we give loans for low-income housing, make sure that our students don't have to get high-interest loans when they go to college, so they can actually have an opportunity to get a real future. Actually, let's restore the American dream and let's take it away from the bankers who have stole it, have perverted it, have destroyed it, have made it, sold it, have codified it into, to a million different pieces. But the reality, it's our dream. We are the people of Los Angeles, we are the people of this country, we are the people of Occupy L.A.
Thank you. Jesse Navatney.
Good morning, board members. My name is Jesse Navatney. I'm a graduate in environmental studies at UC Santa Cruz with honors. Now, I am very fortunate, I only ended that four-year degree with one year of student loan debt of $15,000 from Wells Fargo. Now, I'm paying $150 a month and that does not even tackle the principal, that is just the debt, okay? I'm just paying interest on that. Now, I am finding it very hard to get a job, all these people are finding it very hard to get a job. We need propositions that actually create jobs and that do not add protect... We need propositions that actually create jobs and that do not add protections and deregulations to these banks because it's the corruption of this system that is causing this thing to go downhill. Now, we are seeing the income of the wealthiest Americans go higher and higher while the incomes of the rest of the people, the 99%, staying the same, while the cost of the same standard of living is going up and up and up. Now, if these people are actually controlling the government to manipulate it for their own advantage, that is theft. They're kleptomaniacs. We have to let this stop. Now, if this proposition, this item 24, if you read it, you think that it protects banks, if it adds more deregulation, I urge you to decline it. Say no. That's not what we need right now. We need to protect the people. We put you in here to represent us. Now do your jobs. Thank you.
Kevin Patton.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Kevin Patton. I am opposed to item 24 because I think that if everybody actually takes a look at it, the banks are the problem. The last gentleman was correct, the banks are the problem. Every single year, billions of dollars go through these banks, through city bonds. This money goes to support fictitious wars like the war on drugs, the military-industrial complex. These things are supported through these banks and they really are destroying our society. So I am firmly opposed to it. I think it must be realized that the fractional reserve banking system is the problem. And if we were all just to take a step back, we would be able to open up a broader market and people would be free again. Thank you.
Orlando Diaz. Orlando Diaz.
How are you guys doing? My name's Orlando Diaz. And first, I have a quick question. This is a Los Angeles City Council meeting, correct? Where is Los Angeles? We have people working out there every day just to have enough money to be broke while they're putting so much money in taxes into these banks. They don't even have a chance to have a say out here because they're working so hard just to be able to support their kids. Why should we be working harder just to make sure they get more money? I'm sure if all of our brothers could be here in solidarity with us, they'd say the same thing. We don't want these bank systems anymore. I mean, the bank systems are tearing this world apart. You know? I mean, money is just gonna lead to more money, it's just gonna lead to more greed, which is gonna tear this society down. And that's what we're here opposing. So I publicly oppose item 24. Thank you.
Arminek Nurgyan.
Respectable City Council members, dear fellow Angelinos. I actually come here to, you know, to support item 24. And I ask City Council members to pass with card item 24, to pass with Budget and Finance Committee report because it's vital for issuing city bonds program. I understand that Occupy Los Angeles is anti-imperialist movement, though. Most speakers from Occupy L.A. movement were simply arrogant and hoity and they didn't reflect the interest of a Angelino resident. City of Los Angeles needs a city bond. We need private companies to underwrite and invest, banking investment, you know, to get both bonds to build more affordable housing, other city programs, to pay for city services, to pay pensions. Los Angeles city need that loans, need a city bond. And we need private companies to underwrite and issue, or investment bankers to issue that loans. Just because some of our speakers from Occupy Los Angeles are communists and maybe we want to nationalize banks, most of them definitely won't support them. And those people who were speakers and were not Los Angeles residents, they are spoiled brats from wealthy families and just give arrogant and hoity attitudes to all of us. But I believe that, actually, that underwriting, remarking Budget Finance Committee report should be made public, should be available to all interested parties. And any attempt, I believe, Los Angeles government should avoid corruption. Because if Los Angeles government keep engaging in corrupt practices, those people are responsible for no bidding contracts and stuff like that, or kickbacks or anything like this, or criminal conspiracy to receive us kickbacks, to do extortion on those subcontractors will be protesting about criminal government.
Thank you very much. Nasir? Nasir? Lavie Nazareth? Nasir? Nasir? Or it's Nasir Lani Nazareth? Okay. We will go to the Valley for Donna Pierman. To Van Nuys.
Thank you. As I said, I wasn't gonna speak on it. I'm against number 24. It's which means welfare, the banks don't help the middle class, they don't help them get a second mortgage. But I am against making it against Zionist Jews. Banks are not filled with Zionist Jews. Plenty of Christians are in banks. I'm not scared either. I will not allow this to be about Zionist Jews being responsible for the banks. After a beautiful Jewish holiday and before another one, it's not right. So I'm against this, but I'm also against them talking about, that lady talking about Zionist Jews. That's not right. Thank you.
All right, back to City Hall. Chris Legal Senior. Chris Legal Senior.
Good morning. Good morning. And actually, it's good afternoon almost. I thank you for that privilege of being before you. I thank you, the mayor and the City Council distinguished members here, and also all the guests and the guests in TV land. I'm here to say I object not to all of the partners you list to do business with, but specifically the ones who have engaged in the corruption that is part of the lawsuit and investigation by the SEC. We have widespread corruption and we're asking you not to look the other way. There's a tendency in public service is to seek corruption and to allow that corruption evade our boundaries. And when we do that, it continues to encourage them to continue to doing it. And we ask you to look at some of the remedies that are available to you and how you can help this process go along in a more free democratic way. One of the tools that I noticed that the U.S. Attorney General used recently to combat some of the fraud in this industry is RICO, which is not religious individuals caring organizations. And it's not a country like Costa Rica, but RICO is racketeering, influence, corrupt organization. And it penalizes all members of a criminal enterprise who does predicated criminal acts in order to hurt the constituents and our citizens. And you have that power to recommend these type of investigations by unanimous vote. And I suggest you even do your own research and see that the U.S. Attorney General in Central District, he did a prosecution in San Diego for mortgage fraud and he was very, very successful. And it sends a chilling message that if you're part of a criminal enterprise, it doesn't have to be mobsters now, it can be any criminal enterprise. You are not beyond our reach. Thank you.
Kristin Van Salter. Kristin Van Salter.
Hello. I'm Kristin Van Salter and I'm here today to voice my opinion. I have a right to speak and I'm asking for your respect to listen to what I'm about to ask. I would like to be heard. It's my right. I am one of the voices representing the lower class. I'm here to ask you, as a citizen of the people, to listen to the people and oppose item 24. Those banks have betrayed the people with greed. And we, the people, are not responsible for their actions. The banks are. We shouldn't suffer. We're tired of letting them continuously profit from our money that we don't see any of. Do the right thing for you, your families, and for the people and our families. Thank you.
Marlon.
Regarding item number 24, from a moral perspective, it is abhorrent to work with the same institutions that recently put millions of people out of work through greedy over-speculation previously unseen anywhere aside from a silver screen with Tony Montana doing his thing. From a practical perspective, the banks very recently sold us out and continue to do so and only operate in relative health thanks to federal manipulation that has resulted in the printing of copious amounts of paper, which ultimately is a loan that will be carried on the backs of many generations to come. If any of you have children or grandchildren, something you should be concerned about. Unless we collectively learn a new way to live, eliminating consumerism and debt altogether, supporting the banks, as a friend says, is feeding the hand that bites. I oppose item 24, if you can't tell, and you should too.
Maximilian Via. Maximilian Via.
Good day to you, council members. My name is Maximilian Via. I am here to oppose item 24. And I'm also here to expose the monetary system for what it truly is. We could speculate on the banks, but the monetary system itself is why we are all facing the human problems that we are facing as far as classism and every division that separates us as a whole unison. And item 24 will actually hurt a lot of the people out there, whether it is promoting jobs or anything, because focusing the jobs aspect still enslaves you to that monetary system. And the monetary system itself is why we are facing here and why I'm standing here to expose for it. And that's it. I'm against item 24. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that marks the end of our public comment period. Our first speaker in the queue is Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Alarcon.
Council members, this is where the rubber meets the road. We can go outside and patronize the people who are expressing their democratic rights by giving them water, shaking their hand, telling them thank you. But this is exactly what they are protesting about. You can't do both. You can't go out there and patronize them and vote to support the CAO's recommendations. Martin Luther King used to talk about silver rights. At the final stages of his movement, he was not specifically talking about civil rights, he was talking about silver rights. Because he understood the final bastion that would be most challenging to the United States of America was to make it more equitable financially, economically, so that all the ships would rise. He understood that. Today, we have a measure before us to allow banks that we suspect that we have supported the city attorney in filing actions against because we believe they were bid rigging or involved in swap deals and they will not let us out of those deals that are reaping them egregious profits. We don't have to do that. We could just say no. We could just say no to those banks that are doing that. Back when we passed this listing, I introduced an amendment which was approved by this city council. And that said that we exclude from the list any financial institutions that have been found to have committed financial wrongdoing against the city of Los Angeles or any other government entity it has transacted business with over the last five years, including but not limited to institutions that have participated in bid rigging, illegal quid pro quo with bond rating agencies, or criminal conspiracy or fraud in relation to swap deals. How can you support that? How can we support the city attorney's actions to get back the taxpayers' money because we believe they ripped us off? And yet, put them on this list? We do not have to do that. Let's do something bold. Let's say no to these institutions that are causing havoc in our communities. I believe that the motion that I've introduced with Mr. Rosendahl will send a powerful message. Let's exclude those banks, those financial institutions, that we believe are participating in illegal activities that have harmed the city's taxpayers. This is not our money. This is the taxpayers' money. We control $6 billion directly every year in deposits. We have $30 billion in deposits when you look at our pension systems included. That's a lot of economic power. That's a lot of silver rights. Let's not forget that we are not spending our money here. If I get ripped off at the grocery store, I'm not gonna go back to that same grocery store. Let's use some common sense here. If these people ripped us off, let's not go back to the same people that rip us off. So with that, I urge you to support the motion by Mr. Rosendahl and myself to eliminate those banks, those financial institutions from this list that we believe are involved in any of those tactics that I mentioned, that we supported in amendment earlier on. I don't believe the CAO should have put them on this list based on that amendment. But now that they are here, let's do what the CAO should have done. Let's take them out before they take all of us out.
Our next speaker is Bernard Parks. After Mr. Parks, we will hear from Mr. Cardenas. It will be after Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Could I ask the CAO to come up at this time? Colleagues, I think what's important on this issue is to realize that there's a difference between banks and underwriters. And in looking at that difference, what we have here is a list of people that are going to assist us when we go in debt to sell our bonds in behalf of the city. I think it's also important to realize that we can't convict people on an indictment. We should be waiting till the closed session today so we get briefed on exactly who's at fault and who are in the case and who may be guilty before we just make judgments. In fact, just recently, we found that Goldman Sachs, that's been listed as one of the main players, has been eliminated from the lawsuit. So before we then can start eliminating people out of this process, I think we need to know the facts. And so, Miguel, why don't you tell us exactly what this is? This is not banking, this is underwriting. And even if you could explain to the public that even when there is a banking institution, the underwriting element of it is totally separate and there's a firewall between those two operations. So why don't you explain what we have before us?
Miguel Santana, CAO. Before you is not the approval of specific bond deal. What is before you is simply a list of underwriters that we will eventually reach out to, to engage in the various bond issuances that the city does. I have a list that I'll be happy to share with all the members. That includes the various bonds that we anticipate doing over the next 10 months. It includes $150 million of general obligation refunding bonds, the MICLA program. It includes the bonds that we will be issuing for the rehabilitation of the convention center, a number of different projects, including the Sixth Street Bridge. So what we did is, what we do every three years, is we ask the various underwriters if they're interested in being on this list. This list is the most diverse list in the city's history. Over 40% of the firms that are on this list are minority or women-owned firms. And that is as a result of the work that many of you have done to ensure that we reach out to as many firms as possible, not just in the city, but throughout the country, so that they could participate in providing the city access to the bond market. The outcome of that has resulted in the city being very successful in obtaining the lowest rates as we did during the last tran that was over $1 billion of .23 basis points. No other jurisdiction in the country has been able to issue that kind of tran as successfully as we have. So before you is, again, not a specific bond issuance, but a list of firms that we will be partnering with in the future as we go out to the market.
Could you also explain to us why this time you added a new feature on the list that gave you the capability of adding new firms in case there's mergers, sales, or people going to default? going to default?
Certainly, in the last several years, there's been a tremendous amount of change in the financial market. And given that this is a list that's going to last more than just this year, we wanted to make sure that we were able to respond to any changes that occur that are unforeseen.
Okay, so we have the capability that these lists get approved, but you also have a secondary pool for each list in case there are issues that are unforeseen, that you have to make decisions on bringing new banks into it?
That is correct.
Okay. And then also, when we look at this list, particularly in the short term, which is most critical to me, what's the impact if we, in the sense of talking about in the last couple of years, over a billion dollars' worth of TRAN bonds? What's the impact if you do not have large banks with capacity?
Well, for the immediate, our goal is to select an underwriter to assist us on the convention center project in partnership with AAG. We're going to be meeting with the IRS next week to go over the structure that all of you approved, and so we were, our goal was to have an underwriter for that meeting and so that we could begin that process. We're also scheduled to go out to the market on wastewater to refinance that. But there's a whole schedule of various bond issuances, including MICLA for the Sixth Street Bridge and other major capital projects.
But the one I'm specifically concerned about is, when we deal with TRANs, what's the correlation between the TRANs and having banks with the capacity to do the bonding?
Well, the city borrows in advance each year as a way of paying our pension obligation early on. Last year, we borrowed about $1.2 billion. That allowed us to then make our pension payment early enough, so we actually received a discount from the two pension boards that was worth about $30 million. In addition to that, we borrow money through the TRANs for cash flow purposes. All of our revenue doesn't show up on July 1st. We get it incrementally throughout the year. And so, like any business, we essentially borrow the amount we need upfront and then pay back those short-term notes with the revenue stream that we receive throughout the year as scheduled through sales tax, property tax, and the other taxes that we receive.
Okay. And could you explain to us what the difference in negotiated and in the competitive bid and a sense of flexibility and why we, over the last five years, have gone more in the negotiated area?
Well, there was a time that the city only engaged in competitive bidding, and what the outcome of that was that most of our businesses was given to the largest firms throughout the country, because they have the greatest capacity and the best ability at times to be the most competitive. Through your direction, we've begun to negotiate some of these deals, which allows us to bring together a group of both big and smaller firms. We've been successful in ensuring that the people we do business with represent the diversity of the city through this approach, while not sacrificing our primary responsibility to ensure that the city receives the best rates possible. The most successful example of that is, again, the last TRAN issuance that we did just earlier this year, where we received the most effective and the most cost, the least expensive basis points in the city's history.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. If I could ask you to press right, Miguel?
Okay, let me just say...
Last question?
Sure.
For colleagues, if you look at the attachment that's been provided with the CAO, it will show you how business has been done in the city since 2008, when we've gone into negotiated sales as opposed to strictly competitive.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. The question to the CAO staff is, are we now looking at potentially the most diverse pool of firms, meaning large, medium, small, local, minority, women-owned, that we've ever had in the City of L.A. in this category?
That is correct. This is the most diverse list, the most comprehensive list of firms in the city's history.
And 10 years ago, the participants, the underwriters of these lists, even though the list looked a bit different, the process was a little different than we have today, were we participating at the rate that we're able to now with the diversity 10 years ago that we have been over the last few years and going forward?
I wasn't here 10 years ago, but that's my understanding, is that there's an enormous difference in the way this list would have looked 10 years ago than it looks like today. And that's in part because the city has engaged in providing opportunities to smaller firms, which in turn allows them to build up the experience that makes them competitive when they submit a proposal under this kind of context.
Okay. Actually, it was extremely different. There was probably about 80% of the business that was being done for the City of Los Angeles was, in fact, what we call the biggest New York firms. They were doing about 80% of the actual, they call it takedown, the selling of the city's bonds 10 years ago. Now, we're looking at probably closer to less than 50% of the actual takedown or the selling of the bonds is going to those firms, and upwards of 50-plus percent are going to firms that were not participating hardly at all with the City of Los Angeles. To me, that is very important for us to understand, is because we have actually created much more competition when it comes to selling our bonds. As a matter of fact, over the last four or five years, we have been told by the industry that we have had very aggressive sales, and when we talk about aggressive sales, that means that we have more money remaining with the city, paying less for our bonds, than had we not made these changes. So I just wanted to thank all of my colleagues and the staff for finally moving significantly in a direction where we are now in a completely different place. I'd like to also clarify, based on a lot of the comments that were made earlier, I'd like to clarify that the lists that we're looking at right now, Miguel, these lists are not lists of banks or organizations that are going to be taking in our deposits, correct?
That is correct.
That would be different activity, different lists, different, different issue. Right now, we're looking at, these lists are the firms that actually would be tasked with selling our bonds. For example, the building that was built across the street from here, that was a 500 million, approximately $500 million bond sale. And then it was firms like these that actually went out there, hopefully aggressively, went out and sold our bonds as aggressively as possible, so we can build that building as efficiently as possible when it came to the financing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So two different things. I'll push my button again, Mr. President, to clarify some more things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Alarcon's concerns, Mr. Parks' concerns, are we going to publish the list of banks, institutions that have ripped the city off and ripped off the general public? Once they are actually found to have crossed that line, are we then going to publish that list? So people will know, this bank does honest business, this bank does not, because there's concerns. And sometimes there's allegations, and if it's proven, are we then going to publish that list? People are going to be asking, because there's a number of institutions that are on item number 24, and we don't want to condemn them all. Some are doing it right, some aren't. Are we then going to come public? Because people are going to ask, which institutions have not done in a fair, honest manner? Are we going to publish that list?
Well, that's ultimately your decision, but the litigation currently is still, hasn't been concluded. So once that is, the outcome of most litigation is public, but I would defer to the city attorney on any further questions regarding that issue.
Is the city attorney representative here to answer that? Because I think a lot of people want to know which institutions they can do business with and they can trust, and other institutions that they cannot do business with, that they can't trust. And do we have a representative here from the city attorney's office? If you please come forward. Because there's a lot of concern about the dollars and misappropriation. We know what happened recently with Kendi Durkey and how millions of dollars were misappropriated. There's a concern, not only by the people of Los Angeles, but throughout the state and this nation. Madam, city attorney?
Certainly. Assistant City Attorney Beverly Cook. And in answer to your question, it would be consistent with Mr. Santana opined about previously, that the list would be public as soon as that litigation is complete. The litigation is still ongoing now. There are any number of these institutions that are being dismissed, are settling cases. That's all a matter of public record, so it will be available for the public.
So people who want to know will get that information?
Certainly.
It will be transparent, and it will be...
Absolutely.
They can get it without going through a big ordeal. In other words, it'll be easy to obtain.
It should be, because it already is a matter of public record. We would not be disclosing anything that's confidential or privileged.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Carriz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm certainly sympathetic to the amendment to item 24, item 24A. I think there are definitely bad actors on this list. There are some that the city's engaged with litigation on. There are others where it may not be directly a problem, but we know they've engaged in bad actions. So, and in fact, some of these folks are people we should be embarrassed to do business with. But at the same time, there are questions in terms of the practicality of it. If we wanted to, how do we remove bad actors from this list? How do we ID them? Would it harm the city if we removed them? And if we pass 24A, how would we actually implement it when we would be passing a list but then saying, remove bad actors that we haven't identified yet? I don't know if you can answer those questions?
I believe that as part of the CAO's report, and I'm simply looking at their instructions, there will be the ability to remove for certain reasons. And certainly, if there is, if there's, with the pending litigation, if there is a definitive outcome, there is a process to remove certain individuals from the list.
And what about, in addition to the pending litigation itself, and we know there are other inappropriate activities that some people on this list have engaged in, how do we, how do we draw the line if we decided to do that?
Actually, under the city's administrative code, any proposer is entitled to due process. And there should be a hearing at the evaluation process before the city actually engages or contracts with those individuals or awards a contract. So this is simply the list, and I believe that the CAO goes through what they call a mini-process, mini-RFP process, to actually select for a particular project. And so at that time, if there was someone who would be excluded for any particular reason other than the litigation or including the litigation as well, they would be entitled to a hearing first before they could be simply excluded.
Well, you've read item 24A. How would we actually go about implementing that? If that passes, what do you do differently?
Well, 24A is somewhat broad. I believe that it includes any financial wrongdoing. And what we have, we have our hearings process. In addition, we have the Responsible Banking Ordinance, which will be before you at some time in the future. And I believe that as part of this RFP process, the CAO has collected information from the financial institutions with respect to what was required under the Responsible Banking Ordinance, so they would have that information where they could evaluate.
I'm not sure I got an answer to that, though. So 24A passes, how will we approach anything differently? Or will we, will this be more restrictive? Are we already, will our processes already do what is suggested here?
Good afternoon. Noreen Vincent from the city attorney's office. Council member, we have in place the Contractor Responsibility Ordinance, and that's separate and apart from the Responsible Banking Ordinance, which I understand will be coming before you. But under the Contractor Responsibility Ordinance, prospective contractors fill out a questionnaire. And in that questionnaire, there is a comprehensive list of questions that are posed, and the purpose of that is to determine whether or not the entity with which we're about to do business is responsible. And based upon the responses to that questionnaire, which are signed under penalty of perjury, the awarding authority, in this case, the CAO's office, would review the questionnaire and make a determination as to whether they thought the entity was responsible or not. If they determine that there is basis to believe, based upon information in the questionnaire or other information, that they want to hold a responsibility hearing, they may do so. And at that responsibility is where the due process would be afforded, and then a determination is made. If the finding is that it is not a responsible entity, then they would be precluded from doing business with the city for a period of up to five years.
If I could just, I apologize. I know my time has run, but I still haven't gotten an answer to what essentially is the yes or no question, which is, if we pass 24A, does that create tougher standards? Or do we already deal with bid rigging and fraud and some of the things that were called out here? And would we already eliminate companies that have engaged in such?
We already have the ability to eliminate company for things like fraud and bid rigging. Those would definitely go to whether or not an entity was a responsible entity, and it would be a determination made by the awarding authority as to how they wanted to proceed once they had information on the proposed contractors.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
So basically, it validates going forward with an investigation if we find a bank that we consider to be a rogue in this?
Yes.
Yes.
You, under current law, would be able to do that, but this certainly parallels what existing law would be.
Okay. This puts more energy in it, right? And it puts more visibility in it. And it goes on the record and basically says, if you're a rogue bank, you ain't going to do business with the City of L.A. Is that what we're saying here?
Yes, that would seem to be the intent of 24A.
Okay. I second it, so we could have this healthy discussion here in the democracy, which allows people to participate and discuss it. But Mr. Cardenas made a point that historically, he and I sat on a committee where the bonds were going a certain way, and he and I voted together, didn't even know about it with ourselves, but his logic made a lot of sense, to expand the list, to have minorities in it, to have women in it, to have people who can make a difference, and not just the big boys that run this country and the world, which is frankly what we're dealing with. We're also between the rock and the hard place. Obviously, the energy of the young people here and their frustration, it's too bad Obama didn't do the right thing when he got elected on a lot of these levels. No offense, I love him, I love everybody, but the truth of the matter is, we're in a tough spot, okay? We all are. And Mr. Parks is right about the strategy of going forward with having the options. Mr. Cardenas is right about expanding the list. And Mr. Alarcon is right to highlight, again, the reality of the banks we're dealing with and that we need to go forward. So we vote yes on this. It just puts more energy out there to say, we're going to deal with each one of these banks, each one of these lending institutions, especially those that we feel are doing exactly what a lot of us feel, but we'll lay it out. So we have that option, right? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Engler.
Thank you for your passion, Phil. Appreciate that. And I think you have a good point, that they all have good points. And looking at this and listening to the discussion, certainly a lot of the public comment and concern, I too agree with a lot of that. And that, you know, looking at the notes as well from the CAO, it's, we've got a responsibility. As the newest member who was recently elected, we have a, we swore an oath, and the oath is to protect this public. The oath is to make sure that this institution financially is also protected. And we can't have public safety at all if we're not financially stable, and that's our first and foremost core function. In looking at this, I think all the intentions are correct with Mr. Alarcon and Ms. Rosendahl and all the work that Mr. Cardenas has done to make sure that we have minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses that are located, I want to emphasize this, that are located here in Los Angeles, participating as well with this expanded list. And also make sure that we, and Mr. Carriz made a good point of making sure we don't help those institutions, those financial institutions that have been committed of wrongdoing. And I want to underline that word, committed of wrongdoing. 24A, and I think it's fabulous, the only concern I have is that it does have the word believes to have committed. And then also referring back to the notes, it says might have been involved in any alleged wrongdoing. And I just wanted to ask the CAO, I know the City of Los Angeles, every single day, we're sued. We're sued for slip and falls. We're sued for and settle for all kinds of frivolous lawsuits, because we feel sometimes, often, unfortunately, and these are the taxpayer funds, that it's cheaper to settle than go to court, that we may not look good in court. And so, in looking at this and making sure that some of these maybe-weeby minority-owned, women-owned businesses, whoever they might be, are struggling against the big financial institutions, aren't taken off the list because they've been accused by some other organization of wrongdoing, when they're trying to fight their way to the top, when they're trying to survive and... institutions, aren't taken off the list because they've been accused by some other organization of wrongdoing, when they're trying to fight their way to the top, when they're trying to survive and create a local, strong, thriving company here in Los Angeles. Do we make sure that in the current program we have now, and I just want the clarity on this, that we do take them off the list when they have been found to have committed these wrongdoings? You'd stated that earlier. Do we take them off the list for simply being accused? And I'm not sure if that's what, if I can get a legal opinion as to the reading of 24A, just so we're all clear, that we're not going down a path we're unsure of. The word does say "believes to have committed." Perhaps, maybe, they did something. And I think in today's day and age, and we certainly see by this public demonstration, I applaud you all for coming out today, so shout out to you, thank you for that, and holding our feet to the fire and holding us accountable. Do we, we want to make sure that we give these local institutions, the local ones, the women-owned, minority-owned financial institutions an opportunity. They will be struggling against the big banks. And who do you think's gonna be accusing them of wrongdoing? The big banks. And so let's make sure we give them an opportunity. And so I want to make sure that this language doesn't go down a path in the wrong direction just because they've been accused by perhaps some of these big institutions trying to put them out of business. And could that, is that what this language could possibly do? If you can comment on that.
Well, we've been advised that, in the context of litigation, until there's actually a conviction, then the mere fact that we are in litigation with a firm doesn't justify disqualifying them from the process. And so, you know, we still are responsible under the notion of innocent until proven guilty. And from that standpoint, you know, once, should the outcome of the litigation identify a conviction for any firm that we're currently, you know, engaged with through the courts, then that would be obviously grounds for disqualifying them from any future list or from being part of any bond issuances in the--
Do we, is that a discretionary decision? One last quick question. Is that a discretionary decision? Or do we have a policy? I'd like to see a policy in the city that if, in fact, they are found guilty of that wrongdoing, we do not do business with them and we take them off that list. Is that a policy or discretionary decision by the CAO?
We have consistently recommended that as the process. And within the context of the Responsible Banking Ordinance, once that's discussed, then it seems to me that that would be the appropriate place to actually have that policy established.
Okay. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'm trying to understand the timing. We have 24 that says, "To continue the business of the city, we need to have this financial instrument that's carried out by the list of these entities." 24A is telling us, identify and make sure we don't provide resources to financial institutions that were commit, that were committing these acts that essentially reflect fraud, bid rigging, et cetera. My question is the timing. In this process, will we know if any one of these entities are convicted of the accusations that are made? Can we go back and take away money, take away business? But what's the timing? Can you just share with me the timing issue here?
There is an urgency to approving the underwriter list because we currently don't have a list. That list has expired. And so, there are, we will be identifying underwriters, as I indicated, for the Convention Center deal that you recently approved. And seeking their advice as we work with the IRS to have them approve the structure that you approved. We also will be going out for refinancing of our wastewater. And there's a whole series of other major issuances, including MICLA, that we anticipate going out to the market for in the next several months. And so, without an underwriter list, we can't do any of that. We're basically, it's like wanting to buy a house and not having an institution to lend you the mortgage. And so, there is that urgency. In terms of the issue of the litigation, the litigation is ongoing. And at this point, I think it's gonna be discussed in closed session, if not later. You know, it's not clear to me when that's actually gonna get resolved.
But it is in closed session. We can discuss our priorities in looking at which entities are on the list and who do we consider on top and bottom and competitive presence in the bidding process. We could have that discussion in closed session, correct?
Excuse me. The issue that will be in front of you in closed session today is a very narrow issue involving just one of the financial institutions. There will be a full discussion that's being discussed now, I believe on October 19th, that will discuss all of the litigation. But today, what's in front of you is just one narrow issue.
I want to give credence and value to the sacrifices that I see happening outside this building. I think it is very important that we let the young people know that we are listening. It's critical. But we have to be pragmatic in how we respond to our responsibilities as a corporate municipality. So I'm trying to understand our discretion. That's why I'm asking these questions. I have an 18-year-old who last night asked me, "When you talk about corporate greed and politicians, where do you draw the line?" And this is an 18-year-old. This is my son. And I looked him in the eye and said, "There are elected officials who are honest, who are trying to do the right thing. But we also find ourselves in a process that talks about how we keep this city alive and moving so we can address the needs of our families and our children and our neighborhoods. But we cannot dismiss that which is wrong, that that has been corrupt, that which is falls under the umbrella of greed." And that's our discretion, and that's what we need to determine. So it's important for me to understand where our discretion lies. It's important for you to hear, those of you that are out there, to understand that we are listening, that I am listening. But more importantly, that there's value to your actions. And there's a resounding message being made throughout this country because of your actions. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier, you described policies and procedures to determine which institutions have defrauded, have bid rigged, et cetera. And that is through our department policy, correct? Or is it some other procedures? Is department different from this? Or what were you describing earlier?
What we were describing was, in terms of how to, under a different agenda item several months ago, we were asked to disqualify any firm that we currently have in the context of litigation.
Are those policies and procedures in our administrative code? Or where are those policies and procedures where there is a process that takes place to look at these types of issues to determine who the city does business with? Where is that?
I'm sorry. If you're talking about Contractor Responsibility Ordinance, that is in the City Administrative Code, 10.37, et cetera.
So these firms will have gone through that procedure to determine whether we want to put them on this list or not?
They would have to be in compliance with all existing city policies.
So if they are determined to be, in New York, they did bid rigging, we went through that process, they would not be on our list. Is that correct?
If they were in violation of the policy, correct.
Okay, great. So you go through that due process procedure and you figure it all out. Secondly, for those firms that we are in direct litigation with, are we in direct litigation with any of these firms on this list?
Yes.
We are. I suppose we are in direct litigation with these firms because we believe they did some harm to our city, under our facts, correct?
That is correct.
So why wait till the end of the litigation? We have our own discretion to determine who we do business with and who we don't do business with. We already believe they have done us some harm. That's why we went to court and we filed something in court, and we're gonna defend that and try to win our case. Hopefully, the law's on our side. But instead of waiting for that litigation to end, we already believe they did us harm, why not take those firms off the list?
Councilmember, if I could just add, we listed a number of financial institutions, and we had not completed discovery. And there are a number of these institutions that have been dismissed or otherwise entered into a nuisance-type settlement simply because there was not sufficient evidence to indicate that they had actually done what we had alleged in the complaint. And the discovery process has been slowed in this litigation because the Department of Justice, the SEC, and the IRS are conducting parallel criminal litigation. And so they've stayed a lot of the civil litigation, which was what we're involved in. So I guess to summarize, there have been a number of institutions that have been dismissed from the litigation once we did get sufficient discovery because we could not prove a case against them that they were engaged in bid rigging.
Well, we shouldn't have filed the case in the first place if we didn't believe they did some harm. We, and this is our direct lawsuit on some of these firms.
Yes.
How many firms are there?
There were a total of 35.
And this is not the other larger SEC case? This is our own direct litigation, correct?
This is our own direct litigation. You should also know there's parallel civil litigation that's part of a class action that, and all of this litigation has been removed to the state of New York. So you have criminal litigation, and you have several civil actions going on, class action, and then we have our own individual action.
And I'm speaking directly about our own individual action. How many firms have we listed as defendants in our own City of Los Angeles action?
There were a total of 35 listed.
35? We have sued 35 of these firms?
That's correct.
Okay. And how long do we anticipate these proceedings will take place?
As I said before, because the criminal litigation is proceeding and there is always the right of protection afforded you in the criminal process, they've stayed us from proceeding civilly to ask those questions that might otherwise cause a party to, you know, to violate the constitutional rights, their constitutional rights.
And my final question, my time is up, is can we still function and get the necessary financing we need to move forward without using those 35 firms?
Not at the same competitive rates that we've been able to secure in the past. And I go back to the issue of the trans, where we were able to get the best rates in the United States, in part because of a partnership with one of the major firms on this list. It would be a challenge to not have a major firm for over $1 billion. So whether it's impossible, we would know after we do each issuance. But it certainly would be a challenge, as advised by our financial advisors, in terms of being as competitive as we've been in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for the discussion. And for the folks that have come here, I hope many for the first time, and I hope not for the last time, this is a place where we are able to not only have our voices heard, but also hear some of the history of what's gone on inside these chambers that I think everybody in here can be pretty proud of. I think we have the strongest-in-the-nation Responsible Contractor Ordinance. I wrote part of that myself when I was very active in the anti-sweatshop movement, when we made sure that there were folks that were, anything that we procure, whether it be clothes and uniforms for our employees, whether it be the goods that we buy, we want to make sure that the values that are reflected of this city are not reflected in our financial power. In other words, that we don't reward those companies that are oppressing their workers, that are using underage workers, that are going and taking sub-human conditions in order to manufacture their goods, to spend our taxpayer money in supporting that. We expanded that Responsible Contractor Ordinance as well to make sure that when we look at things, we have the tools today to do much of what we are seeking, I think, in making sure we do with where we put our financial money. Somebody spoke in public comment about, you know, who's gonna stick up for the underdog. I'm proud that this council has and does stick up for that underdog. For instance, when we looked at banks last year, we passed, or two years ago now, the first-in-the-nation ordinance that went after banks that were not maintaining foreclosed properties, that were illegally evicting the tenants that were there, people who came to us that were losing their homes because there were certain banks that had no responsibility and people who were paying their rent on time they were evicting, they were illegally saying, "Here's $1,000 if you leave today. If you don't leave today, in two weeks, you get nothing." And they didn't even have the right to evict them. And in fact, not only has that been passed, it has been copied in over 100 cities in the country. It was adopted by Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae as their own policies, and it has helped also us crack down on banks and led to the lawsuit that our city attorney launched against Deutsche Bank, when we found dozens of homes and properties that they have been slum lords with in this city, where we saw, we expect regular property owners to keep their grass cut, to make sure there aren't windows broken, that there isn't graffiti, that gangs aren't invited in to squat and to use as drug-dealing homes. We put that forward, and we found some banks that were doing that. And so we are currently in court with them right now, and I'm glad to see that Deutsche Bank isn't on this list here today. So I say some of that as background because we are not coming here today with an either-or proposition of either you stand here and do this right. We want something that reflects our values. So let me talk about the values for a second. Because what we have before us is a couple different values. Mr. Cartnez talked about one. One is that what we do with our money should expand out from the few to the many who is able to be at the table. Because women-owned firms and minority-owned firms and disadvantaged firms run by veterans and others have been shut out for too many years from the mainstream of being able to do these sorts of transactions. That's one value that's reflected here today that Los Angeles has already stood up for by this being on the list. Another value is to make sure that we do have folks that aren't irresponsible as part of our contracts. And our contract, what I would like to see, I think the strongest way to move forward, is to look at some way to fold into our Contractor Responsibility Ordinance, something that specifically looks at banks. But we also have to make sure that one of our values is, as has been pointed out too, that if something is so broad that we presume people guilty before we even look at it, it may feel good today, but it is one of my values certainly, that there is still a legal system in which certain people can't just arbitrarily say who is good and bad, that it's accountable to the people and to the course of law and due process. And as I read this myself, it says right now, exclude the qualified list of city bond programs, any financial institution that the City of Los Angeles believes to have committed financial wrongdoing. City of Los Angeles isn't defined, and belief isn't defined. So I think this is a great idea. I would like to see this more specific, though, because the best intentions of government, when they say, "Oh, for national security, for this or that, let's just let one person decide who is guilty," we find ourselves catching the innocent and others up in that net. And right now, I think this does more than just, with all due respect to the conversation you had with the city attorney, and with the city attorney's comments back to you, Mr. Rosendahl, it wasn't just that it gets a discussion out there. This could give somebody the power to do something beyond the way that we've done something with the Contractor Ordinance, which I think is careful, it's crafted, it gives due process, but it also makes sure that our money and our values are reflected as well. And so it would be my suggestion that we look at how we can refine that to make that better. And today, as we look at this list, I want to make sure that the CAO, when they come back to us, because remember, this is just a qualification list here today. I don't oppose qualification. What I oppose is our money going to any responsible bank. And we want to have some filter for when you're coming back for us saying, "Here's the bond issuance, which is doing good things. It's helping us build a park, helping us improve our water, helping us reduce pollution." This is the bank, and this is our report card on them. This is our sense of who they are. So we can then make the decision to say yes or no and stand up for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Following order, Mr. LaBons, Ms. Perry, Mr. Alakon, Mr. Parks, Mr. Carriz, Mr. Cartnez, Mr. LaBons.
Ms. Vincent, this is an RFP, Request for Proposal, right? And we put it out, and then we got it back, and now we have the list before us. If we arbitrarily take someone's name off there because we think they're not correct, could we get challenged by, at this time, since it's already been vetted? Do we run the risk of being challenged?
Well, I think what we would recommend is that any removal would be done in accordance with our Contractor Responsibility Ordinance, which would require that there be some due process afforded. So you would be--
Very good. Okay, due process afforded. Thank you very much.
If I could clarify, was RFQ, a request for qualifications, on a formal RFP?
Okay, got it. All right. So that being said there, a couple things I want to ask the CAO, just to explain, just define MICLA. What's MICLA?
MICLA is basically the process in which we borrow money to build things, to--
Fire stations, animal shelters.
The headquarters across the street is the best example. We're recommending using MICLA to front fund the new Sixth Street Bridge.
But what about the Sixth Street Bridge? I like the old Sixth Street Bridge.
Well, the current Sixth Street Bridge is in desperate repair, is one of the most, it's top of the list of bridges that need to be replaced throughout the country, and we received multiple hundred millions of dollars from the federal government to do that. But we need to borrow money in advance to get reimbursed by the federal government.
I got that. I got that. I'll work with the councilman of the district to make sure it has some historic features in it. All being said, you know Film Lord at all? You know the movie It's a Wonderful Life? There's George Bailey, and there's Mr. Potter. I want to stand with George Bailey, okay? But I want to make sure that it's done right. I want to stand with those and the definition that has transpired over many years here that I've been here, and seeing the expansion of people, of women and minority organizations, local California organizations, our municipal corporations with water, power, with airports, with the harbor separate, is well over $15 billion total, would you say?
Certainly in that neighborhood, or if not more.
Extremely significant. So I think through the process, and I know you, and I know where your heart is, you want to try to find everybody have an opportunity. And it may not be perfect at the moment, but it's at the chance of opportunity for the city to get responsible, qualified persons to help us. And explain the TRAN, because that's a term that some people may not know as well.
The TRANs is notes, short-term notes, that we issue at the beginning of the year to be able to receive a sizable amount of dollars so we could front, we could pay our pension costs in advance, as well as to have cash flow so we could keep the lights on and pay people salaries.
And this is important because this is a fragile, as fragile as the world is, it's fragile for Los Angeles world if we don't do it right and at the right time. And you've researched this tremendously.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBons, Ms. Perry, followed by Mr. Alakon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I want to share a bit of information that may cause people to direct their energy in a way that I think we can all support, and that was a motion that Mr. Parks and I introduced the other day to support the state attorney general's decision to withdraw the state from settlement talks with five of the largest mortgage services in the nation because of questionable mortgage practices, and for us to support that and to support the state attorney general in pushing for additional legislative and regulatory reform. Now, from the state attorney general's perspective, this proposed $25 billion national settlement, coupled with proposed immunities for banks, would be inadequate in our state, the state of California, where our foreclosure rate is second only to Florida. So when that comes up, I hope that we'll see the same level of energy and enthusiasm for that, because I think this is something that's very tangible, very clear-cut, very responsive to the needs of the people that we all serve, very much grounded in consumer interests and fighting for the interests of the homeowners in this entire state of California, where our foreclosure rates continue to rise. And so I wanted to note this for the public record so that people could hear this now, anticipate it now, and understand that we are doing things that are very tangible. And I will reiterate my call that I hope that I have everyone's support when this item comes up, and it will be very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Alakon, followed by Mr. Parks.
Council members, I find this discussion very interesting. Much of it has centered around the notion of conviction. We're talking about a civil case here. We're not talking about a criminal conviction. The separation of powers between the executive, the legislative, and the court system, I think that gives us the right to make decisions based on something less than a reasonable doubt standard, something maybe even less than a preponderance of evidence. We're politicians, and we are holding billions of dollars in taxpayer money, and we're consumers. We buy things. In this case, the idea is to buy a vendor to sell our money. Now, if we get cheated, not somebody that steals from us, but if we get cheated by a store in our neighborhood, what decision would we make as consumers? We'd say, well, I'm not going to shop there anymore. I've told the story, after the earthquake hit, I went to buy water at the local liquor store, $20 for a gallon. I never went back to that store again. Bank of America has admitted to bid rigging. The CAO has them on this list. They're number two. If that's not wrongdoing, I don't know what is. They've admitted it. We do not have to be held to the reasonable doubt standard. A conviction. These are civil cases. They don't end up in findings of wrongdoing most of the time, even when they are wrong. They settle it out. But what is our decision going to be on behalf of the taxpayers who got their money ripped off? We can make these decisions. We can say, Bank of America, you can't play in this game because you admitted you bid-rigged. We can say that today. So all this dancing around is not dealing with the real issue. And I am not, this is not a discussion about minority contractors. I remember when they, when council members were telling me in 1993 that if we let certain minority firms in, that the FBI was going to come in and do a sting operation, and they were already in the house. And guess what? We gave it to the minority contractor, and they made more money than the other companies would have given, $35 million more, and no FBI. It's not about that. There are ample numbers of qualified and non-wrongdoing financial institutions that can handle these transactions. In the first pool, 18. And by the way, these are banks. One of them's called Bank of America. That's a bank. This other pool is for bank investors. Those are banks. I mean, these are financial institutions that are ripping us off. When are we going to stand up? I like all the talk, but this is an opportunity to act. The people out there are acting. They're surrounding City Hall saying, we need to act. They're saying, government, when are you going to do something to protect us? Is it gonna, are we going to exclude somebody, an organization that has foreclosed on thousands of families in our communities? No, they're on the list. Are we going to exclude them when they took bailout money and didn't give any to the small businesses in our communities? They're on the list. Are we going to exclude them when they refuse modifications on the home loans for thousands of families in our communities? They're on the list. Let's take them off the list. There's, you know, the public is crying out. The frustration that you're hearing from Occupy LA, Occupy New York, or any number of dozens and dozens of jurisdictions across the country is exactly what is happening here on this item.
Mr. Alakon.
What is your frustration? When are you going to say no? Today's your opportunity. Don't wait for the next time, because it may not be there.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Cardenas asked, did he go before Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks, with your indulgence, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, you have it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
In the chambers, in the chambers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
In the chambers, please. Please, in the chambers. There will be no outburst in the chambers. Sergeant Arms, disruptive conduct, will have you removed from the chambers. Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I really appreciate, up until a minute ago, the respective discourse that has been going on here, but there's a lot of history in this country and around the world where people do get angry and frustrated, and then it becomes a mob mentality, and that's not good either. So what I'd like to point out is that we are certainly responsible for the decisions made on behalf of the government of Los Angeles, the city council is, and I'm trying to continue to remain responsible and legally within our guidelines of what kinds of actions we can take. This was, in fact, an open and fair process, an RFQ. There are organizations on the list that are in the process of either eventually admitting and settling and/or being convicted of wrongdoing, and until that happens, I think that they have the right to remain on the list, especially when we look at language in 24A that is written in a way that it doesn't clarify exactly how or who they would have to be accused of in order for them to be disqualified or taken off the list if they've made the list. So what I'd like to do is ask that the city council, through the appropriate committee first, the budget committee, that we look at the cause and a report back from the CAO and the rest of the pertinent staff, a report back within 90 days on the cause and effect of any action if the council would exclude from the qualified list for city bond programs, any financial institutions or firms that have been, have committed financial wrongdoing within the past five years, including but not limited to a criminal conviction, or a civil verdict, or a settlement in which the City of Los Angeles is a party. Said financial institution or firm shall be removed and/or precluded from serving on the city's qualified list for a minimum of three years. And in addition to that...
Is that a motion?
A report back. I'm asking for a report back from the staff. Thank you, Mr. Englander, Councilmember Englander. I think it's important for us to continue to be deliberative. I think it's important for us to continue to be fair, and also in addition to that, we need to be mindful of the law. And the fact of the matter is, if we went ahead precluding someone, for, I'll give you a perfect example, Goldman Sachs. Goldman Sachs was on the list of the bad actors. All of a sudden, we're finding out today that they are no longer being prosecuted as such. So therefore, what if we would have excluded them a few years ago, and then all of a sudden they're found that there weren't, they did no wrongdoing in those categories, and then all of a sudden, they can look at us and say, since you did that to us, anytime somebody else is accused, you have to do that to them because you are the government. You have to be consistent. If this were a private venture, a private corporation, they have a lot more latitude. But we have a responsibility of adhering to fairness and equality in every process that we have. So I don't agree with 24A, that we should pass 24A today because it is too loose and too broad, and it also asks us to take black-and-white actions based on accusations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, you want to hold till the end? We do have a couple more speakers. You want to basically close? Okay, let's go, Mr. Coretts, then Mr. Weezer. Mr. Coretts, Mr. Weezer.
First of all, there's one thing I still want to clarify. It was said earlier in discussion that the ultimate decision is made by the determining authorities. So let's say it's a bond that our airports are putting out. They would decide on this ethical question of whether someone had violated some of these laws, bid rigging or whatever, and should be excluded. Is that correct?
Well, it's following Mr. Cardenas' motion, it would, you know, seek the city attorney's further clarification, but my understanding is that it would be limited to council-controlled departments.
I couldn't hear the last thing you said.
It would be limited to council-controlled departments, but I'll refer to the city attorney for further clarification.
What was referred to was the city's contractor responsibility ordinance, and that ordinance does provide that the awarding authority provide the hearing and make the determination. And our contractor responsibility ordinance does not apply to proprietors. They may have adopted their own, something similar, but our ordinance as drafted does not apply to proprietors.
So would it be the fire department that was making the decision, or would it be the council that would be making the decision?
Typically, it would be the awarding authority.
Which is...
So in some instances, it may be the fire department, in other instances, it may be the city council.
Now, let me make my point, which is, my reading of 24A would be, the council would be the one making the decision in all these cases. So that, if that would be correct, that would be a significant difference in all the other processes that we're talking about. And I don't know, is that correct?
Well, the moving paragraph does have the council excluding the qualified list. As I said, under contractor responsibility, it's the awarding authority. There are certain situations in which the council is the awarding authority, but typically, I believe the due process hearing has usually been done by the departments, and then a recommendation made to council.
Well, my reading of 24A is that if the council took out one of these bidders, then that would be it. And I would like to see the council have more control over that. The only objection I have to 24A that's been mentioned several times is slightly squishy wording, so I would suggest tightening up the last clause by having it read, any financial institution that has committed financial wrong, rather than what the City of Los Angeles believes. If Mr. Alakon would take that as a friendly amendment, I would offer that. I would assume, instead of saying any financial institution that the City of Los Angeles believes to have committed wrongdoing, it would read, any financial institution that has committed wrongdoing. And I believe Bank of America, for instance, there's no doubt they have committed financial wrongdoing. So I think that would be a more solid way to word it.
Mr. Alakon, that friendly amendment...
I need a clarification. Who would measure it?
Well, it would still be the city council's decision, but it would be a decision that they have clearly committed it, not just that we believe they have.
So the measure would, would you, are you saying that the city council has determined to have committed?
Any institution that has committed.
No, but the city council makes that determination. Would you include the language the city council determines?
No, I think for it to, I think some other entity would have had to determine that.
Well, what entity? How about Occupy LA?
I think we're referring to somewhere in the court system.
Well, I can't accept it because you're not clarifying who would make that determination. I'm saying, we, as politicians, should make that determination.
Well, the word believes seems like, well, there are entities that I believe have committed some of these violations, but I believe it in my heart, it hasn't been nailed down by anybody.
Well, then clarify who would make that determination.
You want to consider, you want to hold and consider this, and we can hold this on the table, this particular amendment? We'll bring that back, Mr. Coretts. Thank you. Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Weston, just popped up. Mr. Weezer, you're number two. Mr. Weston, just popped up. Mr. Weezer, excuse him. Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. This has been a very interesting discussion, to say the least, and I think several members on this body have made a lot of sense. But to the CAO, what's before us today? What are you asking of us today?
We are asking you to approve a list of potential underwriters for future bond issuances.
And these are people that you've qualified based on what?
These are a group of firms that have gone through a process, an RFQ process, that was evaluated by a committee of various financial advisors, as well as individuals from other departments other than my own.
Is this a guarantee that the individuals on this list will receive work from us?
No, it's not a guarantee.
It is no guarantee. When do you anticipate that we would be in the rewarding of a contract phase?
We would award contracts after this list is approved. We have several bond financings that we want to move forward on.
When?
And...
You're the first one.
As soon as next week, if this is approved.
Why does it have to be next week? Help me understand.
We have a financing for the Los Angeles Convention Center, and we are trying to move forward, like Miguel said, they plan to go to the IRS to get the structure approved, the financing structure. And we would like to have a underwriting team on board so that we are all on the same page so we can move forward with the financing.
Are there any entities on this list, Mr. Santana, that have not been accused of any wrongdoing that you can comfortably rattle off, and I'm not going to ask you to rattle off names?
Who have not been accused?
Of doing anything wrong?
I, I mean, I can't speak to, I could only speak to those that are part of the lawsuit. I don't know if they've been, haven't been accused of wrongdoing by another entity other than the city of Los Angeles.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is that this is a very, very important decision, and it's not one that I think we should make on the fly. I agree with everything that Richard says, but I also think that there's merit to asking this recommendation by Mr. Alarcon and others, that it be properly vetted. And in order to properly vet it, we need to send it to committee. Now, the problem that I have now is I'm being told that within a week, you want to award contracts or whatever the appropriate word is so that we can begin to set up these teams. I mean, when do we actually have to sell the bonds? Do you have to sell the bonds next week?
No, we're not selling, selling the bonds in the convention center until next year, but we are in the process of presenting to the federal government the structure that you approved and to receive...
And why do we have, do we, is that something, I mean, I have, I have no problems in saying, okay, take this list, do your due diligence. I, I'm fine with that. But I think if you've got to, to be in communication with the feds, there's no reason we can't take whoever's suggestion it was and, and make it from 90 days to 60 days, and you bring that back to us so that we feel better about not only who's on this list, but we will know really what we can do and cannot do where it relates to making sure that we don't give bad actors our business. So I believe you have enough wiggle room to, to move forward, but then give us the necessary time to have all of these questions vetted, have it sent through the committees where it should be sent. Because I mean, Richard, I agree with everything you said. Okay, how do we do this so that we don't get, except for the timing? I agree with everything that you said, but how do we move forward to make sure that we're not sued again over something else? I agree with the concerns that Mr. Cardenas brought up, Mr. Englander has brought up, Mr. Rosendahl's brought, everybody. So what we need to do is to take a deep breath and figure out how to move forward without handcuffing us, and how to appropriately divorce ourselves from these entities that are taking advantage of the people and taking advantage of the city of Los Angeles. So I think this is what we should do, members, and I think I need to hear from the CAO. Can you give us the time necessary so that we can properly send this to budget and finance or wherever else it needs to go? Now, I would think you could do that, but I will let you answer.
Well, certainly, your council could direct not approving this list, but it's, let's be clear, we will not be able to issue any bonds whatsoever without the list.
But see, I didn't say that. No, 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 don't get me wrong. I did not say, the approval of this list means nothing other than there are individuals on this list that you believe are capable to do the job. It's you want to come back to us and say, now we're going to do this bond issuance or that one. So we're not saying, okay, go ahead, do this. This is just to begin the process and to begin negotiations and stuff, right?
Right.
To send off RFPs and have these people compete, right?
We do a mini RFP.
So we, we're not, I'm not saying reject that.
Mr. Weston.
Oh, I know, I just, and I'm sorry to go over, I rarely do.
You do.
So, how do we move forward? Miguel, help me package this and land this plane. How do we move forward to give you what you need now, yet still get the actions in committee so that we can properly vet it? Because I believe this council is going to take some bold actions to try to protect us and to protect the taxpayers. So how do we do that? And then that's my last question.
So, as part of the process, the next step would normally be is that we would do a mini RFP for whatever specific bond issuance or underwriter that we're looking for. You could allow us to proceed in that process, to do a mini RFP, and, and then come back to you with the outcome of that RFP so when you select, you, when you approve the underwriter, we don't waste any time. We just need to be mindful that there are several issuances that are pending.
So do we have 60 days? Do we have 45 days? What do we have?
You have as much time as you believe is necessary.
Realistically, what do we have? We're friends, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I understand. I think 30 days would be reasonable.
Okay, then, I think 45 days would be reasonable. So why don't we do what I believe was Mr. Cardenas suggested? We send this to committee. I see where you want to go with this, Richard, whichever the proper committees are, and we move to give Miguel the flexibility that he needs today. Mr. Coretts, you will have the time to get the proper answer that you want. We'll be able to work with the city attorney to get the language that we need so this council, at the end of the day, this council elected by the people of Los, Los Angeles would be the ones to make the decision. And what, what I'm saying is, let's take 45 days, send it to the proper committee, and let's get it done.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We do have four more speakers on the queue. Mr. Cardenas.
Point of clarification, Councilmember Weston made a motion interpreting what, what my intent was.
I was trying to give, but I couldn't find you.
Okay, um, let, let me clarify if you don't mind, Mr. President, point of clarification. What I was referring to is approving 24, the committee report, and sending the rest of the, the questions to committee. Okay, so that's what you meant?
Thank you.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we, we have that. For clarification, Mr. Weston?
Forty-five days is fine. I just wanted to give them enough time. Forty-five...
All right, 45 days, that's what the consensus is.
I just don't want to misunderstand the directive. So, we, your motion allows us to move forward with the mini RFP, but, yes, but does not allow us to move forward on the selection of an underwriter until after this process has been completed? Because that, that plays into the schedule that we have for various...
All right, thank you. Let's move on, Mr....
Excuse me, Mr. President, is there a second to Mr. Weston's motion?
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Second by Mr. Weezer. We do, we don't have, Mr. Coretts has any motion, and also Mr. Weston. And now we have Mr. Weezer, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks, Mr. Alarcon. We shall continue. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, and I assume what I just seconded means 24 is moving forward, they're going to do their due diligence, but you saying moving all these questions to committee means 24A as well. Is that, yes, okay. And, and I support the intent of 24A, but as written right now, it is vague. When we say that whoever we believe to have committed this, we have to be a bit more specific and put in there what our regulations are, the contractors' bidders' ordinance, and what we will hold them accountable to. We just use general language, it says believes. Anybody could take advantage of loosely written laws, no matter if it's for the good or the bad. So we got to make sure that we're being transparent as to what standards and accountability we hold anyone to. And I think that would allow us to clarify that language. You've got to be specific. As written right now, 24A will get us nowhere, and we've got to be very specific as to what standards and accountability are we holding these banks to.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks, Mr. Alarcon to conclude.
What I like about this discussion is that we're finally getting to something that's of substance. Uh, 24A, I believe, had a great, has a great spirit. It speaks to a lot of emotion. And 40% of my district is at or below poverty. The people in my district are suffering like many of the people in our whole city. But I want to make sure something's clear is that we do have the strength to stand on our convictions and to make hard decisions. We could say no to banks. It's been done in the past, but we have to do this responsibly. So I appreciate Councilmember Weston and Councilmember Cardenas' approach. My question to Mr., to our CAO is, the timing, that's what I was trying to understand, is what's the timing of this, given 24A's intention? But we, I think we now have some traction as to defining what discretion we have as a body to not reward those who have violated the law, and those who have been accused of ripping off this, this city and our citizenry. That is a point we're going, we're going to get to, correct?
And that's my understanding.
Okay. So we can move with our projects and our programs and our responsibilities, understanding that we don't have to reward these bad guys, correct?
That's why I sought clarification for, that we are, this, the action doesn't stop us from moving forward and engaging in a mini RFP, but concurrent to that, there would be 45 days to codify the motion that was introduced, bring clarification, and we wouldn't come back with a final, with any bond issuance or any underwriter until that 45-day period.
And just lastly, and I, hesitant to say this, but I'll say it anyway. The language that is used, that we are being gracious and we're tiptoeing and we're giving lip service, to me is not so much insulting, but it is, it doesn't feel right that we would be accused of, of that. What we're trying to do is the right thing. What we're trying to do is work with substance, with real language that goes beyond beliefs, that we are responsible for the fiscal health of the city, but we also need to find a way to make the bad guys accountable, and I believe we'll get there. I'm not saying this is to pay lip service and get claps and, and hurrahs and, and to be applauded. That's not the point of this. The point is to make real decisions and to truly support those who are making those sacrifices outside of this building, but to do it in a way that's responsible. So I thank my colleagues for this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks and Mr. Alarcon, one of you wishes to close? Mr. Parks, Mr. Alarcon? You're the last two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I think that, in looking at this, just want to clarify that we are all in the same vote. There's been conversations in this discussion about whether these underwriters have participated in foreclosures, whether they were, participated in bailouts, or whether they got bailout money and did not mitigate loans. Miguel, is that in the underwriters, is that any of the functions that they participate in?
No, this is strictly to be underwriters to help us go to market on various bond issuances.
Okay, so they don't participate in any of those issues. The other one is that in responsible banking ordinance, where are we on that? I think we discussed it at last budget meeting.
Uh, we're, at the last meeting, we reported that we should have a recommendation to all of you and within 30 days of that time.
Okay, and I think in looking at this for me and looking at this motion 24A, I think we have to realize that, you know, this whole system is based on justice, and it's not just the justice for people we like or dislike or that are unsympathetic. I think if all of us, if we look around this horseshoe, have in our background and our history, that some member of our family was mistreated by the judicial system because somebody thought they were involved in a crime, or someone thought that they participated in, quote, wrongdoing. And I think what bothers me on the 24A is, until we decide and clarify what wrongdoing is, and until we go beyond just believe, we're now setting up a system that basically says that people can just go out with a kangaroo court and decide what company they want to deal with or not deal with. I think it's also important, as we live in this city, every day, someone makes an allegation against someone, and an officer may make an arrest. Also, we know that the city attorney and the DA makes a judgment on a filing, and eventually there may be a conviction. Those numbers dwindle significantly at every level. So to believe that every allegation ends up in a conviction, or every filing ends up in a conviction is not being reasonable. And so I think we have to be, very, very important for all of us to understand exactly what we're trying to do, is put forth a group of people or companies that will be able to sell our debt for the smallest amount of interest for the city of LA. One thing I think in going forward is that we need to make sure that the city's financial responsibilities are taken care of. We certainly have taken five years to get where this list reflects the diversity that you currently see. One thing, Mr. Weston, I know you're concerned about the timing. I would suggest, rather than tie the city, CAO's hands and not allow them to bring us forth a deal, when they think that the interest rates are in our interest. If we look at the committee report and eliminate number three, which basically says that they are given the authority to execute contracts with these companies over the next 22, or the next three years, and require that all of those come to this, to this council, so that we can see them and you can see who's a part of each deal. You then would not tie their hands, they could move it forward, and if they find an interest rate which is in our interest to save money, they're not waiting for an arbitrary 45 days, 20 days, or 30 days. The whole issue of refinancing is to save money for the city. And if we don't get that opportunity, then we will cause this financial situation that we have to go against us. And so I would hope that we can resolve all the motions that we have before us and look at number three on the committee report. If we eliminate that and require all deals to come to council, and yes, we should be interested on every deal, because if it were not for Tony Cardenas and the bond committee, you would not have the diversity of that sheet that you have, and making sure that these small local companies get business. And so I would recommend that, to give the city attorney, the city A O the greatest flexibility to save us money and keep the rates down, and bring us the deals when they're forthcoming.
Mr. Weston for clarification?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask Mr. Santana, with the suggestion that I made earlier, does that put the city at financial risk?
No, it does not put the city at financial risk. It, it delays some of the issuances that we have on the schedule, but it does not put us in financial risk with a capital R.
And, and so do it, we won't lose some interest rates or what have you. I know that's one of Mr. Parks's concerns, and the, the, if, Mr. Parks, I'm open to incorporating, trying to come up with a way to incorporate what you want to do, but I know, I think the council, I just think from listening to the discussion, would feel better if this 24A and other suggestions were vetted in budget.
We'll do that.
And then brought back here, and then I think that we can move forward on this. But what I would like to try to come up with is a way for us to do that, that does not put the city at financial risk. And, uh, Mr. Santana, our CAO, seems to believe that that could be done.
All I would say is this, I think financial risk and losing potential interest rates and losing money is two different things.
Well, that's what, what about the interest rate?
Interest rates are historic lows at this moment in time. There is a sense of urgency that we've been advised to take advantage of those lows. So any delay, obviously, you know, no one has a crystal ball as to where their ultimate need to go. They're unlikely to go further down.
All right, thank you.
The last thing, and then maybe we can, can, can wrap this up. Then, Mr. Cardenas and, uh, Mr. Alarcon and other members of concern, if we eliminate the section that Mr. Parks has recommended, if we move forward and put this, the amended motion on track to be properly vetted in committee, still within the 30 to 45-day timeframe, then I would, I would support that. And I've received a nod and a commitment from Mr. Parks, that his committee could take all this information, properly vet it, and then we could get city attorney recommendations at the end of this time period. So I would support that.
Thank you. Final and to close, Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I think there's been some productive debate, and I want to thank Mr. Weston and Mr. Cardenas for offering an opportunity for us to further explore how to handle this situation. I cannot support this list. I want to read to you an article from the New York Times dated December 7, 2010, and, and I just don't think we should be complicitous with these people who have been convicted of defrauding the public. Bank of America pays $137 million in bid rigging case. Bank of America agreed on Tuesday to pay federal and state authorities $137 million to settle charges... to settle charges that its securities group helped rig bids on municipal bond contracts, according to the Security and Exchange Commission. The settlement is part of a wide-ranging inquiry into municipal derivatives markets. The investigation has centered on whether Wall Street banks improperly won investments while defrauding cities, school districts, and nonprofits. Eight bankers already pleaded guilty to charges of fraud and conspiracy, including former executives at Bank of America, UBS, and J.P. Morgan Chase. This ongoing investigation has helped expose widespread corruption in the municipal reinvestment industry, Robert Cusami, director of SEC's Division of Enforcement, said in a statement. The conduct was egregious. In return for business, the company repeatedly paid undisclosed gratuitous payments and kickbacks, and affirmatively misrepresented that the bidding process was proper. In return, the federal government agreed not to bring criminal charges against the company, immunity that does not apply to its employees. Councilmembers, I cannot support a list that includes these banks. And I don't think you should either. The, the fact is, they are, they have committed crimes of, of, of a kind that are exactly like what is being proposed by the CAO, that they, that they be given an opportunity to bid for investment bonds. I mean, that's, that's insane. I, I don't know how we passed the motion back, uh, when we instructed them to come up with this list. They were supposed to eliminate banks that had been found to be, to have done wrongdoing. They did not do that. And we have done nothing today, well, I'm hopeful in 45 days, we will come back with an opportunity for the council to assert jurisdiction over what the CAO is doing, because they're just giving it up to the banks. Banks that have been found guilty of, of using public money wrong, and even nonprofit corporations. So, I don't know when we're gonna make a strong statement. The CAO has been holding on to my banking responsibility motion for years, years. And now they want to come back, and they're gonna shuck and jive and say that they can't come back with, with the full proposal because they need clarification. And that's what we're doing. That's what we're doing, folks. We're allowing the banks to rip off the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. All right, that's our final speaker. Mr. Cardenas just came up on the queue.
Apologize, Mr. President, I wasn't gonna speak, but that was a pretty grandiose statement that was made, but I just want to remind all of us, as Councilmember Parks tried to remind us, we have responsibilities that are direct and black and white, and some responsibilities that don't look very black and white, but they're still our responsibilities. When we don't act, when we act in a certain way, especially when we try to just please the public, make ourselves feel good, sometimes it costs our own constituents millions upon millions of dollars. Isn't that a fact? When we go out for these bond sales, we do it very deliberately, we do it very carefully. We try to pick firms that on that sale, notwithstanding whatever else opinions people may have of them, or what they did in the past, or may do in the future, we look at them, and you put together pools of underwriters that can go ahead and sell those bonds as efficiently, as aggressively as possible, and do we in fact, on occasion, are able to prove that on that market day, that team did better than everybody else, and therefore, does it save us, in some cases, millions of dollars?
That is correct.
Does it, that put more money in your pocket, Miguel?
It puts it in the pocket of your, of the city of Los Angeles.
The city of Los Angeles, the people who pay taxes, the people who expect us to have police, the people who expect us to keep that lawn out there green. All of that money comes back to the city, and also it saves the general fund specifically, correct?
That is correct.
Most of the time, it's the general fund specifically.
That's right.
So, my point is this, we are acting responsibly by moving forward on 24, and in addition to that, I'd like to also point out that if we don't act on 24, and we do have to go out for bonds, we have a current list of underwriters, don't we?
No, we do not.
But we, we, hold on a second, we could in fact go out for a bond sale, and you could come forth and say, we need to put these underwriters together. Cause more work on your part?
No, we current, the list has expired, so we need a new list to be able to issue any debt and, um, from here on forward.
So, therefore, the point that you were making, I think a little bit too gingerly earlier, was this, that you were trying to be specific to Mr. Weston's question, does it put the city at financial risk? Not globally, but does it risk the city's finances?
It reduces our opportunity to take advantage of the interest rates that currently exist. That is correct, and in turn.
Which costs us more money when we don't take advantage of that, correct?
That is correct, that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Okay, we have, um, Madam Clerk, Mr. Coretts had many motion, Mr. Weston had many motion. Madam Clerk, can we go forward, please?
Um, Mr. Coretts's motion was to amend item, motion 24A. I believe that would move forward, be part of Mr. Weston's motion, which would be referred to Budget and Finance Committee.
Mr. Parks?
I think my motion was last.
Mr. most, Mr. Weston's, Mr. Parks's motion amended Mr. Weston's motion, correct?
Okay. I just want to make sure we have it on the table.
Right, but it would be, uh, Mr. Weston's motion, as amended by Mr. Parks, was to approve the Budget and Finance Report as amended to remove recommendation number three, and also to refer motion 24A and other questions to the Budget and Finance Committee to return within 45 days to council.
How many days?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days. Miguel, forty-five days.
And also, the CAO would be allowed to move forward with the mini RFP process.
Right. Okay, everybody on the same page now? All right, colleagues, open the roll. Pardon me? Miss, Madam Clerk, repeat what we're voting on first. Mr. Alarcon, hold on one second. Madam Clerk, repeat, one vote, two votes, how many votes?
Well, one vote on this particular motion, and then, if you like, we can vote separately on motion 24A, but it's, the last motion, the last motion made was Mr. Weston's motion as amended by Mr. Parks.
And repeat that, so everyone will understand.
That's part of.
Are there any?
Motion made by Mr. Weston was to approve the Budget and Finance Committee Report as amended to remove recommendation number three, and to refer motion 24A and other questions to the Budget and Finance Committee, and to return to council within 45 days, and also to allow the CAO to move forward with the mini RFP process.
Any other questions, Mr. Alarcon?
I would like to bifurcate, what, what happened to my motion? It was seconded and introduced, what happened to it?
Well, that's why, that's why we're, we're clarifying, Mr. Alarcon, before we vote, and I want to make sure it's clear to everyone. So, Madam Clerk, can you respond to Mr. Alarcon's?
Okay, Mr. President, I am asking to bifurcate the question.
Okay, I have no problem bifurcating.
May we bifurcate the question? Everybody can vote whichever way they want, but I'd like to know what specific items we're voting on. I want to vote on some, I don't want to vote on others, it's that simple.
So, Mr. Cardenas, clarification?
Yeah, point of clarification, um, I'd like an opinion as to whether or not we're gonna vote on the last motion made, which is Weston's, and if we bifurcate it, are we changing his motion? I don't mind the, the separation of the vote, but are we in fact changing his motion?
Mr. City Attorney?
It, it appears to change the intent of his motion and, and the.
Correct.
Substance of it.
So, so, so therefore, by bifurcating it, we'd be violating the rules?
So, let's bifurcate. No, okay.
That's the point.
Mr. Alarcon, is it be bifurcated, Mr. Weston, Mr. Parks, they don't bifurcate? Mr. City Attorney, obviously, we need a legal opinion on this. Mr. City Attorney?
The, the, well, the, the motion that was expressed by the clerk is before council. If it fails, then, um, 24A and other motions that were stated beforehand would be before council. So, if the Weston-Parks motion fails, then the other motions can be taken up.
All right, so everyone understand, we're gonna be vote for the Weston-Parks on the first round. Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay, that passes. Madam Clerk? There's a request that we move to number 39, and it's 20 minutes to two. There are some committee meetings that are scheduled at 2 o'clock. Do anyone have committee meetings scheduled this afternoon? Mr. Englander, you want to start at what time? Okay, we're gonna start the quality productivity half hour after we conclude this meeting. Mr. Rosendahl?
Item 13A has been circulated, the gentleman's in the room, we're fine with it, we'd like to approve that.
All right, we'll take that up in a moment, 13A. Mr. Alarcon?
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement that the ad hoc committee, um. What's the name of the committee? No, what's the name of the committee? It's a new committee.
Waste Reduction.
Uh, Ad hoc Committee on Waste Reduction and Recycling was scheduled to meet at 1 o'clock. We will commit, uh, we will convene five minutes after the end of the council meeting.
Okay, that one that I referred to, it's audits and government efficiency, that'll begin a half hour after this meeting concludes. It's now 20 minutes to two. Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry, do you have? Yeah, we'll do that in a minute. I'm trying to find if there's any committee meetings that we can let people know what time they're gonna begin. Mr. Parks, did you have a?
We'd just like to continue 27 till tomorrow.
All right, number 27, continue tomorrow. Mr. Rosendahl?
Just 13, we're ready to move on it.
Number 13, colleagues, on number 13, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
13's done.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
There's a, there's a card on item 13. Do you wish to reconsider that item?
Mr. Rosendahl, there's a card on this item, I thought it was resolved. Mr. Meese does not wish to speak? Okay, he waves? All right, okay, that matter's resolved, then he waves that opportunity to speak. Um, Ms. Perry has number 39. Madam Clerk, number 39, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair, and in the interest of time, I, I'd like to move this ahead. I do think there may have been some speaker cards, are they, uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, on 39, there are speaker cards, am I correct?
39, we do have.
All right.
We do have a few speaker cards.
All right, let me just say a few quick words, and then you can go into the speaker cards.
All right.
Uh, I, I think that the working group has, the task force has done a good job. I want to thank them, thank Public Works, Public Works Commissioner, and all the supporting departments, DOT, Building and Safety, uh, Street Services, to deal with the issues of safety on the street and, um, ability for pedestrians to be able to move freely and safely. The one concern that I had was that the city not regulate competition of the food trucks, but to merely provide a safe, safe situation in parking lots away from the core, on the perimeter of the event, to allow for safe pedestrian circulation at the event, and to push the food trucks out. I think that is still a very good idea, and in observing the, the previous art walk, I felt that it worked very well, but I did not want the city to get into regulating who could go where, as long as they pulled a permit. So, I had asked the fire department to create a, a formula or a calculation for occupancy load in parking lots, to determine how many trucks can go in a lot, and to do it that way, and then whoever goes for a permit, successfully pulls it, you know, has the right to go in there and sell and compete. And I am pleased to say that, um, the fire department did come up with a calculation, and, uh, I think that we will try it for the next few art walks. Hopefully, it'll work to the satisfaction of everyone, maintain a high level of safety, and, uh, to note that there is no cap on the number of trucks or the number of parking lots that can be used. This should go a long way to reaching out and satisfying, um, locations further away, like Grand Central Market, who hope to be, uh, engaged in a participant in art walk and other portions of downtown, such as the Fashion District. So, that's all I have to say, and I.
Ms. Perry, there was a public comment on that during committee. There's five cards, if you wish to have those folks heard, if you wish to open that up for public comment.
You might want to call and see if they're still here. Are they here?
Anyone here? All right, you folks wish to speak, Joe, we will reopen the public, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, uh, excuse me, I was not only involved in this issue, but it went through my committee as well, so if I could speak before the public speakers and.
I would just limit it to one minute, uh, piece, so that.
Okay, all right, we'll limit this, public speakers one minute a piece, Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Labonge. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too want to thank our Public Works Commission, particularly Ms. Alarcon and the fire department, and everyone who put their time and effort into making this event a possibility to continue to exist. Unfortunately, because of our economic situation, our financial situation, there are less and less public events like this one throughout the city. It is costing more to put them on. Here, for the first time, the city will now ask the event organizers to reimburse the city for some of the costs associated with this event. It is not something we want to do, but we have to do it to be fair and consistent with all the other people who hold events throughout the city that pay for these events, to reimburse the city for these events to happen. At the end of the day, I believe all of us want the art walk to continue to exist and flourish. We won't, don't want it to be a victim of its own success. In fact, you have more and more people learning about it, coming to see it, but with that, there are public safety issues, there are issues we need to do as a city to make sure that this event continues to flow smoothly and without any danger to anyone who comes visit the event. I do have one question, if I could ask the commissioner, Alarcon, or, um, anybody who could answer this. We, uh, someone spoke earlier in public comment that now live entertainment will be banned. Are they talking about the core of the art walk or the outside perimeter? When that language is in there, what exactly does that mean? There still will be live entertainment, but what, what exactly does that language pertain to? If you could explain that, please.
Andrea Alarcon, President of the Board of Public Works, but for purposes of this discussion, solely chair of the Art Walk Stakeholders Task Force. The prohibition on live entertainment applies to open-air parcels in the perimeter, so outside of the core.
Outside, so outside the core, there would be no live entertainment where?
In open-air parcels. So, they could be theoretically in a building structure, but just not on parking lots for instance.
And the reason that's in there is to prevent the accumulation of people who are watching the show that would spill out to the sidewalk and through the streets, correct?
Yes, so what the stakeholders have found is that live entertainment attracts a, a large concentration of people at any given moment, so if a live DJ were to begin playing on any given parking lot, the, all of the pedestrian traffic would flow towards that area, and it creates too much congestion. But in addition to that, there are also residents and other business owners who were concerned about noise reduction, and so the prohibition on live entertainment is in response to those concerns.
Great, thank you, and I don't want people to think that in any way, shape, or form, we won't have the great music and entertainment that we've been experiencing at the art walk. In fact, you go out this Thursday, I think you'll be all over, and you'll still get to see that. We're just trying to set some parameters and regulations as to where and where not that can happen for public safety reasons, and so I just wanted to make that clear as we move forward. Uh, at the end of the day, I, I do think this art walk will continue, and I hope that we all continue to do this in partnership. It's something that eventually would happen in one way or another, for us to, to set some regulations in place to continue to allow this event to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Englander?
I, I consulted with Avak, who's very key on this. He believes it was Pachetti's opera that was played by the Spring Quartet.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Stop. What I want to say is I don't believe we should ban single non-amplified string acoustic instruments, violins or guitars, or, or something, solo artists, who sometimes are college students having to play public spaces for that. That's the only thing I'd like to ask Ms. Perry, if we could look at that issue, so.
I don't know if that connects with the art walk, if it does.
No, I want to ask Ms. Perry, because there's a, uh, Ms. Perry?
Yeah.
Art walk, Ms. Perry.
Because I understand the, uh, amplification of rock and roll and the impact on, uh, on the residents, uh, but I think solo artists on non-amplified acoustic violin, cello, guitar, you know, that just should be, the one person should be left to stand, and I think that entertains people, not impeding anybody, if that's possible. How can we look at that?
Well, I think that you'll probably have to go through an art walk and then see if you have complaints about it. And then if we have complaints about it, then we're gonna have to deal with it.
Okay, but does it?
The art walk is an evolving, every, every art walk, some, something new arises or something changes, so, you know, if you, you have to be cognizant of the fact of where people live, so, you know, and. know, and in some cases, some buildings, the folks are only on the second story, and that's, what, 20 feet above, above the street?
But it's non-amplified violin concerto, or?
I think that, again, you have to wait and see if people complain. What I'm suggesting is go ahead and try it once, and if you want to amend the language to limit it to acoustic language, acoustic performance, it's, let's see what happens.
Acoustic, non-amplified, single?
But then you have to understand, people sometimes play saxophones and things like that, so you'll probably have to modify it again. But if you want to give it a try, give it a try.
Can we? Okay, because we don't want to ban it.
For just clarification, is the request to allow that as permissible activity on private parcels or in the public right of way?
On the public right of way.
Okay, so just in response, on behalf of the stakeholders, there has been concern that the concentrated pedestrian activity, when there is a solo, non-amplified artist within the public right of way, it impedes the traffic flow, and so pedestrians actually have to.
As the designated areas that the President of the Board of Public Works finds. So find us place for them, that's all. Just you designate a spot, work with Cultural Affairs, so it doesn't impede the flow. But I think that's part of a street life, is the artist, that maybe they're in a violin, and that's what he was trying to say at the podium. So if you could just look at that and report back. I don't want to be today's action.
All right, thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Englander, Mr. Weezer? Mr. Weezer?
Here's what we're gonna do, Mr. Weezer, talk to Ms. Perry. We're gonna do a formal motion on that particular issue that gives you specific directions that meets your golden objectives, make the fire marshal happy, so we'll rewrite that. But I'm gonna revert back to Ms. Perry, Mr. Weezer.
Okay, Mr. Englander, then Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Labonge, I just ask that you do not discriminate against percussionists in that motion, so keep that in mind. Thank you.
I may have to.
You didn't mention percussionists, I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
But that's not why I push my speakers button. First of all, I want to compliment Councilman Weezer on this, and particularly Andrea Alarcon, who is the Chairwoman of the Stakeholders Roundtable of the Art Walk, who's done a tremendous job, particularly in light of this coming out of a tragedy. A lot of us are experiencing these kinds of issues in our district, where I, right now, currently have the largest food truck gathering in California, I believe, and which is what we've been told. We get 6,000 to 8,000 people twice a week, 6,000 to 8,000 people twice a week. There's a lot of people coming, and they enjoy it, which is why we haven't shut it down. But oftentimes, as we discussed in committee, it's easy to take the quick way out, the solution to say, more people are gonna get hurt, let's just shut it down. And instead, Ms. Alarcon stepped up to the plate, brought everybody together, looked at it and said, how do we turn this into something good? The idea that the city doesn't have the money right now to have patrol, to have the extra functions of public safety and public works and sanitation, and having everybody out there to say, we all need to pitch in together, and then went and knocked on doors, I believe, to council offices. So they had Mr. Weezer and Ms. Perry step up to the plate last month, to in fact, pay out of their own discretionary funds to continue the art walk, and then asked all the stakeholders to get together again, to do the same thing, to continue such a great event. So I want to applaud you on that, and just share that some of these things that have come out of here, we're now taking back to my district, to my Stakeholders Roundtable, looking at these temporary use change permits, things we can do. Ours is a little more difficult, because they're not on parking lots, but on public streets and right of way. But there's a lot of great ideas that we'll be voting on today, hopefully to push this through, to say, we need to do this, and take this approach citywide, and to make sure that we protect the arts, we protect culture, we protect people wanting to get out of their homes and enjoy life outside, not just camping on the lawn of City Hall, but enjoying food and culture, and so I appreciate that, and thank you for all the hard work you've done on this.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I want to also thank Mr. Englander for his input in Public Works Committee. And Mr. Labonge, we do have an item number five on the report that requests the Board of Public Works to report back to Public Works Committee on how the October 13th art walk progressed, given the new conditions. So we're getting a report back in committee on some of the issues you raised. We want to see how this goes this Thursday, and then we're gonna get the report back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the public speakers on this matter. Joe Mueller. Kent Smith.
My name is Joe Mueller, Executive Director of the Downtown Los Angeles Art Walk, and with all due respect to council members, I think we may be premature in planning acoustic performances for November, as the community at large is uncertain if we'll be able to make the payment for the October art walk. I am here today to respectfully congratulate the task force on their safety mitigation efforts and point out this is no longer an emergency, this is a financial dialogue. That being said, I'd like to further respectively ask CD9 and 14 if they could demonstrate their respect and desire to see this continue by making a further $2,200 contribution each, and meeting the community halfway at the $8,800 deployment bill that we was handed five days ago. You can't raise my rent without 30 days' notice, but somehow someone can hand me an $8,800 bill and give me five business days to respond. With all due respect to the committee, I'm working as hard as one person can work to congeal these fragmented universe of permit holders, to come up with the money. We just need more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kent Smith. Arnie Williams. Russell Brown.
Good afternoon, Anne Williams, with the Central City Association, representing hundreds of businesses and property owners downtown. First, I want to thank the members and leadership of the Art Walk Task Force. The Task Force has provided an inclusive forum for focused and sustained discussion about important issues, and has enabled the development of changes to the way the city interacts with and facilitates the continuation of an event that has brought tens of thousands of new visitors to downtown, to witness the incredible rebirth of our city's core. So we look forward to continuing to work with the Task Force to further refine the recommendations and ensure that the costs are equitably distributed while ensuring public safety, and also that we do not inadvertently dampen the creative spirit and flexibility that is needed to continue fueling this wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, that name I thought was, I see it's Anne, I'm sorry. Okay. Russell Brown and Renee Warren. Russell Brown.
Russ Brown, Historic Downtown Bid, and also representing Downtown LA and Everard Council. We support the motion in front of you, Anne, and I want to congratulate the city moving expeditiously to work together in a collaborative fashion to keep this event going. I don't think I've ever seen an issue that we've had every single department of the city meet almost every two weeks for about three months to try to make sure we're all partners. Art Walk on the second Thursday of the month has shown that grassroots organizations can not only take back an organization, but can be an economic development engine. Almost 15 blocks of the city have a downtown open house that's revitalized a previously abandoned district, added galleries, shops, restaurants, and bars. With that has come crowds up to 30,000 people. With that, we've needed the partnership of the city. LAPD has been an amazing partner for the last seven years in working with us, and now all the other city departments have, need to come together. We support the motion. I also agree with Joe that we're gonna have to work on a budget to get this together, so it's critical that this be listed as a citywide event to be able to get the discount.
Thank you. Renee Warren, our final speaker.
Hello, my name's Renee Warren, and I'm an event coordinator for the Downtown LA Art Walk at, the show's called IRUDTLA, and it's hosted at the Medallion, which is a commercial real estate property that's been sitting vacant for over a year now. We're revitalizing this property and getting use out of it by creating pop-up galleries for the art walk. It is very, very expensive to run these events and takes a lot of financial forecasting in order to make it happen, and most of the time, the artists are the ones supporting it. To have such short notice, to be able to come up with the money to pay for these city services, which I do believe are needed and appreciated very much, I believe the recommendations that the council have made are good ones, but the cost of being deferred onto private business owners like myself and having such short notice to come up with the money, it simply isn't there, and I'm gonna have to cancel my event if I'm held liable for these costs two days from now. However, 30 days from now, I could put that together for you, and I just feel that we need a reasonable amount of time to be able to work this out.
Thank you very much. That completes that matter. Also acknowledge Councilmember Jan Perry and Mr. Weezer for bringing that art walk to the fame and fortune it has become for Los Angeles. Open the roll, colleagues. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up the two remaining ordinances, items one and 41, at this time?
Yes.
There's cards on item 41.
41. John Walsh. Number 41, Mr. Walsh.
About three more minutes, this is one minute. Who remembers the musical Follies, the big song, "I'm Still Here"? Number 41 concerns bonds. We've been going through this bond issue all day. Remember, that the financial institution that they were talking about for three hours, where we're going into, you're going to secret meeting to accept a settlement for, is Morgan Stanley, capital M-O-R-G-A-N-S-T-A-N-L-E-Y. No one said it, because you're all afraid of them, except Mr. Alarcon, and I'd like to thank Mr. Rosendahl for voting essentially against his own motion. Thank you, goodbye.
All right, colleagues, matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's 41. What about the other one, Madam Clerk? We have the other ordinance.
Item number one.
Number one. No cards on number one, no one on the queue.
We've already heard public comment on number one.
Number one's done? Okay, so that's been voted on. Next item, please.
No, we still need to vote on item number one.
Pardon me?
We need to vote on item number one.
Okay, on number one, I'm sorry, misunderstood what you said. On number one, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Item, item 42, called special for cards.
Number 42. John Walsh. Is Mr. Walsh still here? I think he's gone. All right, John Walsh, number 42, he's gone. No one on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 40, called special by Councilperson Labonge.
Number 40.
Mr. President, Mr. Solis from Record Parks, real quick report.
We do have cards on number 40.
You can go ahead. You want, how many cards you got on 40?
We have two. Arnold Sachs. Donald Sachs here?
No.
He's not here. How about Donna Pyramid in the Valley? Donna Pyramid in Van Nuys? We'll see if she's there.
Which one are we on? Oh, number 40, okay.
Number 40, go ahead, Ms. Perry.
Okay. I want to say that the fire, police, and sanitation, okay, I think I could do it there. Okay. Yeah, I wanted to say that the fire, city, and sanitation, the city employees should have retiree healthcare. They should be negotiable. They need retiree healthcare. It's not right for these employees, their spouse and children, who depend on it, those who want to, those who want to become bear.
Mr. Zine, she's not talking about this item.
Actually, I wanted to speak on something else.
No, no, you're speaking on this number 40, or cease and desist.
Okay, I wish you had allowed me to do 25, because I.
Well, we're already beyond that, ma'am. So do you have any comment on number 40?
Let's see.
This is number 40.
Well, let's see. Well, recreation over here, they should have quality, we need quality, need city employees who are quality work, but this would be Department of Cities, Parks, and Recreation, so they need to have quality workers who do quality work. Happy, well-play employees do better quality work, like private industry works better with workers who do quality work. Our city will run smoother if the work is done with quality. You don't need to use overtime to fix work done incorrectly for those, you need to use overtime to get ahead on projects. And I guess I'll be back over here to talk about negotiable, the retiree healthcare, which I think that the fire, police, and sanitation have.
Mr. President, she's not talking about this item.
So I'm gonna be back on that. Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, thank you. Joe Solis, Recreation and Parks.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Joe Solisis. I work for Recreation and Parks, and my division oversees the Park Film Office. The question that came up about our abilities to continue to work along with the film office, with the film industry, and at this point, we are doing a really good job. We're putting together, we have a film office that provides and recommends park location information, obtains approvals from field management for filming, and processes the applications to film in over 400 of our citywide parks. We've been meeting regularly, quarterly, with the Film LA Division, and also with our Assistant General Manager and our Park Film Office on mitigating any kind of problems that may be created, and working on building filming here in Los Angeles. In addition, we have been attending a quarterly film ad hoc meetings, which are conducted by the CAO's office and other city departments, including the film industry representatives and State Film Office are also in attendance. We've been working closely with Film LA and parallel their hours of operation, so that we can service the entire film industry in our park system. And I'd like to report that at this point, I believe that we're making great progress, and we have a really good relationship with the film production industry.
I know just recently, the observatory, when it's closed, you had it leased out or worked, is there a charge for the observatory?
There is a rate and fee. That is a special facility, so they have their own designated rates and fees.
By your commission, but you're doing your best, because we want to keep people working in LA.
Absolutely. Our whole goal is to bring 100% filming, and we try to get as much filming done in our parks as possible.
But also preserve the parks and the park use at the time that it comes.
That's correct. We also keep the citizens of Los Angeles and all of our park users, we keep them in mind when we make decisions about filming in the parks.
Thank you very much, Joe Solisis. Excuse me. Mr. President, members, thank you. This is just another effort of Recreation and Parks, trying to achieve the balance of parks and recreation and our goal of increased filming.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. On this matter, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 43, called special for cards.
Item what?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs not in chambers. Anyone wants to speak on 43? See no one. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, there's a request for item 43 to go forthwith.
Fourthwith on 43. Forty-three is forthwith.
Forty-three, forthwith.
Next item, please.
Item 27, called special for cards.
Item 27 or 47?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. John Walsh, 47. Mr. Walsh passes. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item passes, next item, please.
Mr. President, remaining are public comment, which was, general public comment, which was suspended earlier, and also item 49, which is closed session.
All right, well, let's do, Mr. Garcetti had these folks, we'll go through the names. This was, these folks that we were holding till later. Hollywood Neighborhood 57. Patel. Patel, Ruby, Jose Torres, Sanyo, Con He Lee, Pepe, Maria, Leopoldo. Marie, April, Rawl, Stephen, Gilbert, Marino, Walter, and Irene. Those are the remainders from that matter. I think Mr. Garcetti resolved that. So Madam Clerk, we're now complete with the agenda?
Item 49, which is closed session item.
All right, colleagues, we will now go into closed session. Mr. Walsh has a card on 49. Mr. Walsh has a card on forty-nine. Mr. City Attorney, we hear that now or later?
There is a card on forty-nine.
Yes. All right, Mr., before we go into closed session, forty-nine, Mr. Walsh.
Before the vote. HollywoodHighlands.org, Walsh Confidential. This is what everything was about. If you weren't here at the early part, this is what everyone was talking about. The city of Los Angeles has thirty-five lawsuits against thirty-five financial institutions. The first one, they're going in the back to accept the settlement. Read what it says. It's legal counsel relative to Los Angeles and remunicipal derivatives antitrust legislation. Case number oh-eight, oh-two-five-one-six involves Morgan Stanley. Do you understand? They're going back and accepting a deal with Morgan Stanley. There'll be thirty-four of them. Now, remember, I might be crazy, but I'm right. I might be a lunatic, but I'm right. And that's what they're doing now. And I'm telling you right now, HollywoodHighlands.org, there's only one honest man, Alarcon. Garcetti walked out.
Well, now we're gonna go into closed session. So Sergeant Arms, please clear the chambers for closed session. If you're not here on us, item number forty-nine.
just the way you are, and you were made this way, but your loved ones get the same reality. My God, it's John, it's Mary, it's my uncle, it's my brother, it's this, it's that. And that kind of connection is the civil rights and human rights direction we need to go. We also feel, of course, in this great nation and world, we don't have our basic rights as gay people. I sit on the City Council here, I'm an equal in an elected sense, but frankly, my partner and I don't have the same rights that heteros have in terms of health insurance, in terms of other issues, social security, and so on, which needs to change the law in Washington to give us that respect. But saying that, it's a good day today if you are in love with the reality of the way God made you, which you must be, because we have to love ourselves before we can love others. I urge you to tell those closest to you who you are, so that we can continue advance in our basic civil and human rights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Perry?
Okay, today, five o'clock, room ten-ten, ad hoc committee on the stadium.
Five o'clock today, room ten-ten on the stadium.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Yes, I would just like to make a quick announcement. The LA Housing Department is going to have the last of their rent escrow account workshops on October the twentieth in Ron Deaton Civic Auditorium in the Police Administration Building, one hundred West First Street. And that's five PM to seven PM. And also, I'd like to make sure the public is aware that the Taste of Soul will be this coming Saturday, October the fifteenth, on Crenshaw Boulevard between King and Rodeo Road, and we expect to have, where they're allowing, about a hundred thousand people in what's viewed as a, one of the largest street festivals in the city, and will go from ten AM to six PM.
Thank you. Mr. LaBange?
A great day on Sunday for Ciclavia, Jose Wezar, and three of his beautiful children riding their bikes through the town. Eric Garcetti, Wendy Gruel, Antonio Virogoza, and myself, and a hundred thousand others. It was a great day. We're going to look to find an opportunity in the valley coming up in the future.
Looking forward to that.
And also, Mr. President, yesterday down in San Pedro, they had the sports walk. A great day. Dan Guerrero from UCLA, a Banning High graduate, Pat Hayden, USC Athletic Director, Moreno Toole, Olympian, water polo player, among others, who were selected and given great recognition in San Pedro. It was a wonderful day.
Thank you. Mr. LaBange. Mr. Wezar?
I just wanted to add to LaBange's Ciclavia announcement that it was an amazing event. You just see people from all walks of life, riding their bikes, skateboarding, doing whatever they can, walking. It is a great thing to see throughout the city of LA, and hopefully, we can expand it to the valley sometime soon.
We hope that, bring it to the San Fernando Valley. A day that's not a hundred and nine degrees. Mr. Cardenas? Okay, let's see, no other announcements, adjourning motions? Adjourning motions? Mr. Cardenas, adjourning motions, please stand. Adjourning motions.
Yes, thank you. I suspect that the passing of Al Davis, you wanted to comment as well, I presume, Council Member LaBange. I was requested on behalf of some of my Raider Nation staff to adjourn in Allen Al Davis' memory. He passed away on October eighth, two thousand and eleven. The circumstance of his death are natural causes. Al Davis was born in Brockton, Massachusetts, on July fourth, nineteen twenty-nine. Al Davis attended Wittenberg University and Syracuse University, where he earned a degree in English. He began his football career as the line coach at Adelphi College. Soon after he became head coach, soon after that, he became head coach of the US Army team at Fort Belver, Virginia. His next coaching assignment was the line coach at the Citadel, and ended his college coaching career as the offensive line coach at the University of Southern California. In nineteen sixty, he became the offensive line coach for the then Los Angeles Chargers. Back to the future, maybe, we're going. After the nineteen sixty-two season, the Raiders' general, he became the Raiders' general partner, F. Wayne Valli hired Davis as head coach and general manager. At age thirty-three, Davis became the youngest person in professional football history to hold the position. He was later named the AFL Coach of the Year in nineteen sixty-three. And in April of nineteen sixty-six, the thirty-six-year-old Davis was named the American Football League Commissioner. Just eight weeks later, when pro football's two major leagues put an end to their six-year war, Davis was acclaimed nationally as the driving force who brought the leagues to merge, creating the National Football League, is what we know today. In nineteen sixty-nine, he was once again a prime force in the dramatic realignment of professional football, when two thirteen-team conferences, the AFC and NFC, were formed. After the NFL merger, Davis bought a stake in the Raiders and became part-owner of the team. And from nineteen sixty-seven to two thousand and eleven, till his death, the team has won thirteen division championships, five AFC championships, and three Super Bowl championships, making the Raiders one of the most successful teams in all of professional sports, and bringing to Los Angeles its only Super Bowl championship in nineteen eighty-four. In nineteen ninety-two, Davis was inducted into the Pro Football Hall of Fame as a team and league administrator, and was presented by John Madden. Davis has been chosen by a record nine Pro Football Hall of Fame inductees to present them at the Canton, Ohio ceremony. Lance Alworth, Jim Otto, George Blanda, Willie Brown, Gene Upshaw, Fred Balitnikov, Art Schell, Ted Hendricks, and also Madden. And one of the things that I'm very proud of Al Davis about, I'll point out, is despite all of Al Davis' successes, he will most be remembered for breaking civil rights and diversity barriers by refusing to let the Raiders play in segregated cities, and becoming the first NFL owner to hire an African-American head coach, named Art Schell, and he hired the second Latino coach, Tom Flores, to be the head coach of the Raiders. Al Davis will be remembered for his love of the Raiders and their commitment to excellence. And he's survived by his wife Carol, son Mark, and a slew of Raider fans called the Raider Nation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. LaBange.
If I could co-present that with you, Mr. Cardenas, on that. And Al Davis also, Amy Trask is the first female to ever be a chief executive of a pro football team. But better than that, in nineteen eighty-four, almost twenty percent of the team that won the World Championship for Los Angeles was from Los Angeles. Mike Davis went to Locke High School, Otis McKinney went to Reed Street High School. Mike Haynes went to Marshall High School, a bunch of UCLA and SC players. And it was a very dramatic time. And I think the success of Los Angeles, right there, was all culminated with that team, Marcus Allen, and everyone on there, and Coach Flores. It was a great experience. He was a pioneer and an interesting man who really loved the game of professional football, and at one point brought an early world championship, so we stand and adjourn in the memory of Al Davis.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wezar?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today also in memory of Richard S. Amador. He was a community leader and did a lot in the area of economic development and education for the East Side. He was born December twenty-first, nineteen thirty-five, in Stockton, California, to Abigameno and Andrea Amador. Richard's legacy of service to community, hard work, perseverance, and love of family does not go unrecognized. He was a founder of Chado Community Development Corporation. His vision and leadership made an impact on the lives of so many in our community. His legacy will live on in the communities he helped serve. As a former member of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute's Board of Directors from two thousand and one and two thousand and eight, Richard also helped lead various major changes at CHCI, that today may get possible and best practice for organizations to have better financial standards. He was a mentor to program participants, a donor, and a partner in their mission. We, as a community, are forever grateful for his courage, energy, and contributions to ensuring that CHCI is successful in developing the next generation of Latino leaders. Public policy was one of Richard's passions. He served as an Alhambra School Board member for twelve years, as well as president and CEO of Chado for thirty-seven years. Richard is survived by his wife Teresa, his daughter Cynthia, and her husband James Diaz, and grandsons Andrew and Jake Flores, son Richard, and his wife Lisa, and granddaughters Lisa, Anna, and Lauren, and his brother Daniel Amador. The family has started the Richard S. Amador Senior Memorial Scholarship Fund to honor Richard's lifelong commitment to educational opportunity. Checks in any amount may be made payable to the California Community Foundation and mailed to their address. We will, Mr. Amador, who not only worked on educational issues, but a lot of the small businesses in the East Side benefited from Chado's work, and did a lot to say that Latinos in the US not only are laborers, but also business owners and people who are involved in the management side of issues in corporations as well.
Mr. Wezar, I'd like to second that. I knew Mr. Amador and worked with Mr. Amador and his daughter Cynthia as a staff person. He was a very kind and gracious man, and always willing to educate people and to teach them the mission of Chado, whose doors were open to help anyone who wanted to be able to stand up and start a business and realize the American dream. And it was very sad to see that he had passed, because it's a big loss. And I hope, if Cynthia is listening, that, I would like to add my condolences to her and her entire family, too. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. LaBange?
On behalf of the fifteenth district, I ask we adjourn in memory of Bobby Costa, who was a longtime coach, born in nineteen twenty-one, loved the South Bay, loved San Pedro, taught young men about baseball and the importance of all sports activity. He is survived by many members of his family. In addition to that, I ask we adjourn in memory of Beatrice Gersh, who was a great patron to the Los Angeles County Art, the County Art Museum. She was born in Los Angeles, raised in Los Angeles, lived a long life, but just recently passed, a great member of the Los Angeles art community. Beatrice Gersh.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. I think that marks the end of our adjourning motions. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.